All right, we'll call the regular meetings for order. Please stand and.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Group board agenda. Consideration that we move. Item. C under discussion. You can write under communication or. I would take item C under discussion, the student choice out discussion. And move that to. Either under communications or somewhere.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of moving the. The special items to see student choice to.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda with the adjustment of moving item C in the discussion under communication. Those in favor, say goodbye, they say aye.
Aye.
Those same time. Next up is communication, that's recognition of retiring student reps and maybe members.
Yeah, so. Let's start with our student reps. And so we want to thank you for your service to the board for being just a vital part. There's a couple pieces I want to talk about here. The sacrificing the amount of adult conversations that you have to be a part of, the reading, the connecting with your peers and adults to find out what issues are worrisome and then how to address that. So we want to thank you for your service number one. Number two, I want to really recognize Hannah Horace for her internship to NASA, which is a really cool thing. I don't know if you want to talk about it a little bit right now, but that's an amazing opportunity. So our student reps are just hardworking and high achieving.
During my representative.
All right. So we got you, we got you these notebooks and so you can take them along with you. But yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you so much for perspectives and counsel, so. And then we'll save the. If you need anything, any letter of recommendation, please always feel free to reach out to us. And we'd be happy to provide anybody wanting for your work on the board. Our next one is to employees who retired. So there's a number of people who emailed me and said they had something else going on tonight. And so those people who I know will tend, we'll start with the closest in proximity. Craig Reynolds.
I should have noticed.
Yeah. So thank you, Craig, for your service to the district, yeah. Carol Swells, Carol's here tonight. Okay, Sue Watkins, is Sue here? No, all right. And so we had a few other people who notified us and said that they couldn't be here. Fred Bray, who's a, who's the PEA president, and I just want to say a couple things about Fred Bray. A lot of times a union president gets a really bad rap from people maybe within our community or communities at large. I would say that in order to keep teacher contracts competitive and something, a profession that people want to go into. Those union, those union presidents are needed and their leadership is needed. And so once upon a time in the valley, teachers were required to do all sorts of stuff beyond their contract. And so it's people like Fred who've really stepped up and led their groups and partnered with the district and advocated for teachers. So Fred Bray, Connie Hassel can be here. Connie has been instructional coach, leadership teacher, math teacher at the middle school. I was lucky enough to have her as a student. I know that a lot of people are. She was unable to be here, but she will be missed. She's just exceptional and always, you know, she has been for quite some time. And then Linda Ledes, who is unable to be here as well. And so our last award, I wanted to really call out somebody from the community who stepped up when they didn't have to. And it was after, after the first levy didn't pass. We had one person who reached out to me and really took it upon themselves, contributed all sorts of volunteer hours. And it really fits in with who this person is. I believe he has a tattoo that says service above self. So Peter Cole, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. And so that's, that's all we have to recognize tonight, but. Yeah, we will get these awards to the people who have earned them and deserve them.
So item D. Under that would be student choice out discussion. Erica, I think you're going to lead us with that. I do want to say I appreciate the effort you put into this and everybody that contributed to this, and I think it warrants a meeting of its own. So I believe we're planning on having another meeting that just addresses this topic and and hopefully we can, we can reach out to the same parents and students that actually opt into the district. And so we have all that information digested all and come up with the, you know, plan of attack. But I'd like to dedicate, you know, a full meeting. I think we've tentatively scheduled that for the June 29th for a special meeting just on this topic. So I appreciate you coming and all those that are here to speak on this, on this topic.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Erica Hartwell. I have two children in this district, a ninth grader and a seventh grader. And so if my children are here in this district, why am I here tonight, speaking on behalf of parents who have opted out of the district? Well, after the last board meeting, board member Rayner and Riley were aware that we had opted out our children previously. Our son, we adopted out for two years for Patterson and our daughter for one year. And so after the last May 25th meeting, I had been approached about why have we opted our children out? And that conversation also included, why did other families opt children out? And so opt out families thought, well, if we have board members listening, this is a time to get together and to share why we opted out. Because several of them have felt that they've never been heard before. So in a brief amount of time, we gathered as much feedback as we could. And so we were able to get feedback from over 30 parents and that encompassed more than 60 kids who opted out. So. What did we do? We gathered that information, the feedback from the parents that we were able to talk to about why they opted out. And then we consolidated it. And this Monday, I had submitted a letter with an attachment for, containing the opt out reasons from these families and submitted it to the board, the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and then the principals of the schools. I trust you've reviewed the letter. And it is attached to the public board packet. And I understand that after it was submitted, there was a request by the teachers' union to take out any individual names that were there. So if somebody looks at the board packet, you're going to see a lot of blank irons. And so that wasn't how the letter was initially drafted, but for public consumption, that's why there are redactions. But the key thing is the redactions don't take away from the feedback, the substance of the feedback that was given. And rather than read the feedback from all of the parents, we expect that the board members and the administration will read it. And so I'm just here today to kind of give you seven key takeaways from that feedback. And then there are also two parents who will also speak. We didn't want everybody to come talk. We figured there's enough information in the letter. But we thought it important to hear from two of the parents who are currently opting out. And they're going to give an overview as to what other parents have faced in that similar situation. And before I delve into the key takeaways, I really do want to thank the parents who came together on short order to do this. They are parents who have opted out and they are parents who are happy with where they're at now, be it Patterson, another district, running start, or homeschool. And so they really did not need to take the time to give this opt out feedback. And I appreciate that there will be a follow up meeting. To be candid, I'm not sure how many of these opt out families will attend and participate just because they already have something that works for them. But I appreciate that there is a follow up meeting because I do hope that district families will attend because I know district families share these frustrations. And so I'm hopeful that this is something that will be remedied. So the seven key takeaways. First, attitude and culture starts at the top. So this applies to administration, the teachers' union, the board, and the teachers themselves. Each one of these organizations and people should strive for working relationships and not adversarial relationships. Or else the district will not be able to provide the excellent educational experience and character development that are its two primary goals. No one should be permitted to bully a student or a district team member. And the little things matter when developing a positive culture. No foul language, no fighting, no vandalism, no threats. All of these things escalate the tension that's already here and are not acceptable. Something that disheartened me during this process of gathering information was learning about a shared theme of fear. There is a fear of speaking out. There is a fear about experiences, about sharing their experiences with decision makers. And because of this fear, several parents who have opted out chose not to give feedback. Is this fear founded or unfounded, whatever its reasons, it really doesn't matter. What matters is there is a current fear and people don't want to give feedback. And this signees the district's ability to serve the parents and students. The remaining key takeaways will provide avenues for the district to remove this fear and to communicate and model the positive attitude and culture that parents are looking for. And being positive doesn't mean that you can't make tough decisions. The board, the district has to make tough decisions. It just means that the district makes tough decisions in a manner that eliminates the fear. And so the second key takeaway is leaders must be seen and accessible. Assistant superintendents, the superintendent, board members, and principals, they need to be present at school events. And of course, you can't be present at all of them, but you need to work amongst each other to make sure that you have a representative at key events. This is an opportunity to network with the parents and students. And in addition to the in-person accessibility updates via bulletin, social media, website, email are critical to advise parents as to upcoming or recent happenings and what decisions you are going to make and what decisions you have made to explain those. The third takeaway is school leaders must advise students and parents as to who to reach out to if there's a problem. So maybe on a back to school night, there's a representative that stands. And you go over what the key mission of the district is, drive by the excellent educational experience and to develop character. You're communicating with parents and students. These are the important priorities and this is what our vision is. But then also you're communicating with them, this is who you turn to if you have a problem. A lot of people aren't familiar with the system. They're not comfortable with the system. Maybe English is a second language. There are all these barriers to reaching out to the people who make decisions. So you need to make it more accessible. Fourth, school leaders must involve others in the decision making process. When the board and superintendent consider decisions impacting the district, they must reach out to parents and teachers. And then they actually have to consider that input. While not everyone is going to be happy with the decisions you make, the process is often more important than the result. And so just explaining why you made the decision is important. The fifth takeaway is the middle school and high school must offer advanced math, science, history, and English courses. The excuse for not offering this class is typically financial. But this is a short sighted thinking. And I'm going to give you an example. So let's say it roughly costs $20,000 to offer a course for 10 students. If the district does not offer these students an advanced class, it is highly likely that these students are going to do running start or opt out to another district. So let's just say half of these 10 students do that. And you have five students who opt out for running start or another district. They take with them the $8,800 a year in FTE funds. So now the district has lost for these five students, $44,000 a year. And this only accounts for the hard costs. There are intangible costs that are not being considered. For instance, you're losing student leaders present at the high school. These high schoolers have to lose out on having a high school experience. And they possibly are not as competitive for scholarships and colleges as compared to kids from other districts. Then there's the disengagement of the students' faith. And not only will you not have those parents involved in our district, but as we've fairly recently seen, you might be losing votes. And every vote matters. We barely passed the levy by 61 votes. There are 237 students who have opted out. I don't know how many parents, voting parents are included in that number, but it's probably close to 61. And I'm not saying that this is a group that didn't vote in favor of the levy. I'm just saying this is a concern that needs to be considered when you're choosing not to offer advanced courses. And finally, there's a trickle down effect. There's the negative bad press by parents, and that's really powerful. And we know that in a small town. And when people choose to move here or they're thinking about moving to Foster, one of the first questions if they are a parent is going to be, what is the quality of schools? I'm sure we've all been asked that question. And generally, what is now said is send your kids to Richland or Edford. Don't move to Foster. We got to stop that. We have to go back to being the district that people want to move to. And we can get there. Also, I just want to point out that 20 to 30 years ago, when our class sizes were about 150 students, we offered advanced courses and we offered algebra at middle school. We now have about 250 kids per class. So it's, it's hard to understand why we don't offer those classes now. Related to these class offering frustrations, our parents are concerned about the class sizes in the elementary school. One parent inquired this week as to why we're not refeeling the fourth grade class that I believe Fred Bray is leaving. And instead, we're having a combined fourth and fifth grade class. Now again, there might be valid reasons for the district to do that. But the thing is, is these valid reasons are not being communicated to the parents. So they're left wondering, why are these decisions being made? Six resources are needed in the elementary school to identify learning challenges and communicate with parents. I received a feedback today, and I just want to add, this goes beyond elementary school because I received a comment today from a parent who has a special ed student, and I just want to read that quickly. The parent said, after trying for six years in the district and multiple years of adjusted schedules, half days, half homeschooling, his quality of schooling was decreasing or not progressing, and his emotional health and self-esteem was tanking. The parent was sure that if her student had stayed here, he was headed for suicidal ideation. He dreaded school that much. So they transferred him to Richland and the Home Link Parent Partnership Public School, and he's finally pregnant, which is wonderful. But we just wish that Foster could offer that. Seven, and finally, the district and all related entities must stop reacting and we have to start planning. This requires a shift in our attitude. We can do this. We can get back to where we were. But we have to believe it. And then we have to do it. It's time to collaborate with the district, the board, the teachers' union, and the parents. With planning and communication, Foster can slow the tide of parents opting out their children from the district. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the district has a big task. I hope this opt out feedback is helpful guidance as to where to start, and I hope that you begin to collaborate with the stakeholders. I thank you in all your efforts and for your consideration of the opt out feedback and for my promise.
Andy Elliott and Erin Hunt are the two parents who are also speaking tonight.
They're speaking, I want to use them to speak, but she had a prior business to them. She can get up, so here I am, speaking for our family. So my name is Andy Elliott. Moved here to Foster about 10 years ago with my wife. We have three children, we just have six. I run a place, my wife's 20 year classroom this weekend, so we'll be doing that Saturday night. And here tonight, many thanks to Lisa and Jason for us to voice why we have opted our children out in foster school district. I really want to commend Erica for putting a good, informative parent together, tremendous amount of data, very short period of time. Because in a key inside of a situation like this, we've got to quantify the, the impact. And if you can't quantify the impact, you can't really gauge our effects. Hopefully, what we're going to express here tonight, a couple of foundations is to earn our trust and bring our family back to PSC. And post the spring of 2020, for the fall 2020, 2020 school year, we looked at five different choices for school districts. Foster, which I have two older children were in. We looked at Mickleton, looked at St. Saint Christian, looked at Christ the King, and looked at St. Joseph's and Kelle. You know, so we did a very thorough evaluation of every school, met each one. It was not an easy decision to decide what we were going to do for education or children. But we had to project forward in what we saw and what we're going to see in the future. Initially, we made the choice under the St. Joseph's Catholic School in fall 2020. So the reasons why is the fact that the experience at KRV was arranged, one educated, totally exceptional. One of them was fairly average and one of them was poor to very poor. We knew that our children needed to attend in person. We were not satisfied with the trajectory of education our children receive at KRV. So we didn't see any better in a teacher, any post code environment and what we saw and lead up to fall 2020 school year. My wife and I sat down, we watched six board meetings, front to back, before the fall of 2020, looking for some reason to send our kids back to PSC. You know, so we were, we were looking for a reason to come back, but we saw no plan was expressed in our kids' education, they'll look like. And what, what they were going to learn in that, in that environment. The public school environment during COVID and local school board taking a lesson, Craig standing against Olympia was sort of the catalyst for us leaving Foster schools. At St. Joseph's, by 10 person learning involved 2020, he's in our first grade daughter, third grade son, we could, we saw how far behind they were. Two kids who were the top of their class in Foster were easily six months behind in their period of safety. Six months. That was hard. That was really hard to deal with as a parent. That took extra effort from us to have catch those kids up in our time. And something that PSC may not even know. For youngest and kindergarten in fall 2020, 21 as well, they have thrived in a rigorous academic environment and experienced that they're pushed ahead. Our kids are given expectations, reach academic excellence. And surrounded by instructors and peers that challenge them to succeed. Idiocracy is not accepted. Educators are actively engaged with parents on curriculum and student development. Every week, we get an email from their teachers of what they're doing in class and what to reinforce at home. We get none of that, yes. There's no sense of teaching to the lowest common denominator, like we have seen as commonplace in PSC and public school in general. Standards are not lowered. We don't widen the play. After two years in this type of academic environment, as parents observing our children, we're at a place where we feel we cannot send our kids back to public school or PSC for fear they will not be challenged enough. Things we have loved at St. Joseph's. Communication is key. Each teacher sends a weekly email of assignments, what's being taught, and the expectations are very clear for each student. Academics are rigorous. Basics are still being taught. Spilling tests, cursing handwriting, basic grammar structure at a very early age. Multiplication tables introduced in the second grade, long divisions in the third grade. Children are being taught how to think, not what to say. Parents are involved in the classroom. You're not turned out any type of fault or activity while supporting your students' classroom. Classrooms and behavior are much more controlled than they were for a set of schools. Critical race theory and new health or sexual education curriculum requirements are not taught, are not even mentioned. So very comfortable with some of the CRT things and sex ed things are coming down the pipe. You know, that's something we have to be aware of in public school. And should actually be controlled global level. My state was up near as long as Erica's, but I want to finish with something that my wife has said to say, because she's a foster mom. And she says, she says, finally, I've been long across the high school, and so disappointed with the stories I'm hearing from close friends and family coming out of the district and watching board meetings. These are not the schools I remember at all. Two decades, two short decades. Do not feel comfortable sending our children to this middle school or high school with the current performance of PSC. I don't know what the real problem is or how we got this way so quickly. When I graduated, I felt fully prepared for my college and my adult life, thanks to my daughter's English classes, AP classes, et cetera, et cetera. It sounds like Foster's no longer offer algebra in middle school. If this is true, there's no way to compete with most local schools academically. Or how do our kids compete internationally? Thinking more broadly, how are kids going to do those in other countries? I know we can do better. Why? Because I've lived in their foster. I'm tired of settling for mediocrity. As a group, we're taking time to reach out to some other local districts, to acquire their curriculum and some other counseling things. I'm going to report on those tonight, then for future meeting. But I hope this is a certain figure out how to fix the problems. Because it was not an easy decision for me to pull my kids out of foster school district. And, and as a parent and taxpayer, I want this to be a good school district. You know, and as a taxpayer, you're, you're, you need to return our best as a taxpayer. And I want to really thank Jason and Lisa for hearing us out on this and why we aren't satisfied as parents or taxpayers.
I appreciate those words as well. My name is Erin Hunt, and we moved to Foster 16 and a half years ago. I have four children and three of which have opted to do the running start. And that's what, what Erica asked me to address today. My fourth son, Tyler, he actually has moved out of the district completely, and he and he's actually thriving from working that. And we're grateful for that. But I just wanted to talk about why we chose running start. And so I, just to be short on time, I'm going to give you the top four reasons that our family, as well as the other families that I know, opted for running start. Just so we're all on the same page, running start is a program where our students are able to attend CBC or YDCC, and they can get dual credits both for high school as well as for college credits. So the first and most important part is the exponential opportunities and diversification that they get at CBC. That's where all of my children decided to go with the CBC route. But specifically, my children have amazing goals. I have one that wants to pursue forensic science. I have another one who is looking at being an orthopedic surgeon. I have another one that is wanting to get involved with filmmaking. And the biggest obstacle that we found with the academics here in PHS has to do everything with the math as well as the science options. We are incredibly lacking, especially when it comes to math options for those kids that want to pursue higher education. But not only that, but it's not just the math and science. My children, it took, it took them from a don't make me go to school to a wow, I get to go to school with opportunities that, like I said, are exponential. The other opportunity was dual credits. My children were able to not only finish high school early, but they were also able to get those college credits, which saved us not hundreds, but thousands, thousands of dollars. My one, my second daughter's name is Michaela, and she was. My one, my second daughter's name is Michaela, and she was able to finish her AA degree. Not only that, but she was able to finish high school early. She did her AA. She went in as a junior and she was able to jump straight into her major courses. And because she wants to pursue masters as well as doctorates, it matters. But she could not have those opportunities if she had stayed in our district, and that is really sad, because the reason why we moved here, like I said, was because we wanted to be in Prosser. At the time that we moved here, that was the rose. That was the place to be for our children. And to be honest, we have less than 40 hours until we are finally done with Prosser School District, and that is incredibly sad to me. I don't want our family legacy to be the legacy of Erica and all of these other amazing kids. You need these higher level kids in your school. It changes the whole dynamics of your classrooms. It pushes other students to excel. You need their test force in order to get the funding that you need to continue progressing on. The other thing was, that was an amazing blessing to our family, was that they could custom design their schedules. There's something about that early morning hour of our kids waking up, and they loved it, because not only could they custom design their classes, but they were able to also work in work experiences and they could, basically, they had the opportunities to prepare for college long before they hit the university level. And for those reasons, we chose to do the Running Start route. We are very grateful that that was an option, because to be straight, our kids were just four. More times than not, they were the teacher's assistants. They sat in class with busy work, doing nothing. They were bored. They need to have that opportunity. But that was the journey of my first group of students, but I think more important for you is my fourth student, Tyler. Today, he just received his certification for a campful. It's a CAD certification. So he's a sophomore right now at Eversham High School. And because of the courses that he was able to take, he now can, he's looking at starting his own business, and he's only a sophomore. But he has a certification in place now, because they had grants in his school. And you can say that other districts have more money, and that might be true. But most of what he grew from were grants that parents went after, so that their schools could have these programs. Why can't we have them here? Prosser truly is a great place to be, but it needs some major renovations and major fixes in our schools. Please don't let our family's legacy be the legacy of the other amazing people that live in PSD.
I appreciate you guys coming tonight, and like I said, we'll continue this. I believe we got a tent that we scheduled for the 29th. We can't really delve into a lot of these details and hopefully start coming up with some solutions. I appreciate, yeah, so thank you.
Actually, if I may, I prepared something to say tonight on why students are leaving. I'm obviously not a parent. But let's talk about my experience with the Prosser School District. My experience with English and history and humanities in general has been great. I took AP US History this year with Mr. Gilliam Hunt. It was probably one of the hardest classes I've ever taken, but it was so rewarding. It taught me that I'm capable of more than I think I am, that I'm capable of great perseverance, even in the face of very challenging material. As you mentioned, I got a summer NASA internship. I'm going to be down there two weeks in Texas, end of July. And it says on the website, it's meant for kids who have had robust science experiences, and it's also meant for kids who haven't. And I think the latter reason is part of why I received that internship. I sought out that opportunity, because I don't know whether I want to go into STEM. I can't know without having had a great STEM experience in my earlier school years. So I'm going there to find out if it's right for me, because school didn't teach me whether it was right for me. Back in sixth grade, I was one of the students taking advanced math. My parents had to fight for me to be placed in seventh grade math, because I was so incredibly bored. This year, I took an independent study online calculus course through BYU, and it was so incredibly challenging. And it was harder than it should have been, because I didn't have a teacher I could reach out to for help when I was struggling with one of the lessons. I didn't have classmates I could collaborate with. I was just sitting there alone in front of my computer, struggling and struggling and struggling. I can't tell you how many times I cried over that course. And I took my final on that just yesterday. Here's hoping I did well. But I had to struggle through this, because this school does not offer a calculus course. As for my science experiences, I have not had great experiences with the lab sciences, whether due to teachers being out for illness or maternity leave and then the pandemic. Ask me how many experiments and labs we did in my chemistry class this year. Chemistry is like the lab science. I had no labs. And that was really disappointing for me, because I really enjoy learning about chemistry and I was looking forward to that. Was, past tense. There's a lot of things that went away at HMS that I think shouldn't have. Algebra went away. I was in the last algebra class at HMS. I was in the last honors English class at HMS. I was in one of the last Spanish classes at HMS. And I don't think that's fair to our middle schoolers. It's just putting them further behind. My sister's also a year ahead in math, but she's a year behind where I was. Because there's no algebra at the middle school. And I don't think it's setting any of our middle school students up well for high school. If they're just taking algebra freshman year, that's not setting them up well for a career in math. In conclusion, I want to be proud to be from Prosser. I really do. And I'm going to do my best to represent as well the opportunities I've earned at this center. I didn't stay at PHS, because the opportunities were great. I stayed, because my parents thought I needed that high school experience. And I don't regret it, but I still wish that the academic part of that high school experience could be something I knew was going to be great. A one-size curriculum does not fit all. I think you are underestimating the students of this district and what we are capable of. We will rise to the target you set, but if you set that bar low, how are we ever going to find our limits? How are we ever going to truly know what we're capable of? Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for letting me voice my opinion at the scene. It was an honor to be one of those, not only to present to my community, but my community as well, we sit in tonight. Just one last thing, I'd like to thank our current board director, Mr. Lust, for everything he's done for me this year, as well as our student body in the last thirty-five years. He was named to be here tonight, because he's doing his best, and I can't wait to be here as a teacher. He'll be greatly mentored in our school to the future, and if the school board doesn't recognize their mistake in the new contract. Thank you for everything. I will be also heading out early, so I have senior activities tonight, so just wanted to take the time, thank you, guys.
So, approval for addressing the board this one. You may present a concern with board change in terms of recurring public comment. If this is the case, we ask the prior to start of meeting, sign in, noting the topic you intended to address to the board. Come to the microphone, state your name. Please do not reflect adversely on political or economic view, ethnic background, character, motives of any individual. And please keep your comments concise and non-emotional. So, do we have any, would you like to sign in?
Yeah.
Please. That's quite a few. I would ask, you know, I do, I think we all want to hear everybody's comments. We do have a big agenda. If you could just, if you could please keep it as concise and brief as you can, I would greatly appreciate it. So the first up would be Megan Minshew.
My name's Megan Minshew. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'm going to be speaking about my brother's personal story with his experience with Mr. Lust. I feel like it just has to be heard. It's something that is important to me. As we all know, Mr. Lust's contract is not being renewed, and the board still has not shown interest in changing their minds. Mr. Lust has supported his staff and students at the school for a very long time. He lives up to the saying, "No must they left behind." And not only does he support the students at the school, but he also makes a great effort in making the president safe and comfortable. Like I said, I'm speaking on behalf of my older brother, who does struggle with autism, schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and also obsession problem. These health conditions make it very difficult for him to make friends, and he was struggling a lot at school. And when he got diagnosed with schizophrenia, he was a lot worse. He was going through something that no one else at school understood, especially at that age, because he got diagnosed pretty young. So there's, you get diagnosed at an older age. And he didn't feel normal. He wasn't deemed normal because of the stuff that he was going through. Mr. Lust allowed my brother to walk with his class at graduation. It was a last-minute decision that my brother made, but he feared it was going to come. But his symptoms, loud noises, large crowds and loud noises make his symptoms a lot worse. So there was...
Megan, can you speak up a little bit louder? They're saying they can't hear you in the other room.
Yeah.
Just speak up a little bit louder.
So it made sense for him to be worried since graduation ceremony. It's a large crowd and it can be very loud sometimes, so it makes sense. Mr. Lust allowed me to spend the day with my brother at the grad walk in senior luncheon. And I was there to make sure he was okay and to comfort him if he did start to have an episode. That day, I got to witness my brother feel like a normal kid. And he had the biggest smile on his face, and he got to have fun with his class, and he felt normal for once. I'm very thankful to Mr. Lust for giving my brother the opportunity to have a normal high school experience. Everyone deserves to feel the joy on their graduation day, and Mr. Lust made that possible today. He didn't have to go through all of that trouble for my brother, and to be honest, most people wouldn't. He could have just left it alone, and yet he made it possible for my brother. Mr. Lust is a kind man who does not deserve to lose his position, and with all that he has done for the school, we need to do more for him. As a small-town community, we will not forget this, and we will continue to show support for Mr. Lust.
It's part of the camera.
Laura, back up.
I'm surprised that everyone didn't want to raise first time. While academics is a huge part of Prosser and kids do deserve the opportunity to retire limits. Student activities and athletics is a big part of it as well. And I was sitting out there, waiting for my turn to speak, while I was on our social media page and messaging through with two foreign exchange students on campus this year. One is Tom Gutman. And he sent a message, or he posted something. He sent a private message and he said, "I couldn't have asked for a better high school experience. Thank you so much." And part of his post included... He did write that you guys gave me the ultimate high school experience. This whole year was a blast. That is also part of what Prosser High School is. I just wanted to make sure I included that part of it. So that happened while I was out there. That wasn't part of my original one, but I wanted to break that up as well. So what I am here for tonight, I am here tonight to seek guidance from the board and its executive, Mr. Ellis. We know that you have made a lot of difficult decisions this year, but as someone who is directly affected by these decisions on a daily basis, there are many known unknowns that are going to be, that are going to become significant wrenches in the peers of PHS or PHS in activities and athletics. We are at the end of the school year, and the work by the athletic director is in full swing in preparation of the next year. But this is all going to come at a halt on whatever Mr. Lust's last day is going to be. Summer athletics will finish without an athletic director. There is still a list of things that the athletic director would normally take care of during the summertime. And I, and I'm sure many at PHS would like to know what the plan is for the following list of tasks. And I will try to just, I don't want to put people to sleep. I will try to get through this quite quickly. So I know some of you have noticed, we still need to make sure that there are fourteen fortress positions that currently aren't filled, that are internally posted, and eventually, the ones that are will certainly be posted, and you still need to be filled. There still needs to be interview committees set up. There still needs to be interviews set up. There's going to be hiring packets and hiring write-ups or recommendations set up and sent to the boards. There needs to be checks for physicals that expire for our summer athletes. There's be camps and tournaments that need to make sure that are paid for. Transportation arrangements and forms provided and turned in for weight tournaments and tasks. There's something to be schedules entered for the 2022 and 23 fall sports season entered into our arbiter.com. Maybe looking for and entering a lot of non-league contests for our fall, winter, and spring sports seasons. Communications with the other athletic directors in our CYP, and somebody needs to get on board with learning or the live streaming system. So that was a list that I have for the summertime. I want to continue now with a list that would usually take place at the beginning of August. Who's going to decide when the athletic secretary gets the start? I'm betting right now you're going to August as the principal, but the athletic director usually gets to decide that based on the WIAA schedule. He's going to hire the vacant ASB, advisory positions. He's going to hire the ASB advisory positions. He's going to coordinate communications to go out to coaches, athletes' parents about the fall athletic registrations and schedules. He'll just check coaches' files for an up-to-date certification CPR, coaches' schools and trainings. He's going to plan and hold presentation meetings with coaches to review the 2023 SOPs, family ID athletic registrations. He's going to review the athletic books with them, review the ASB rules and regulations, review the new house bill, 1660 rules and regulations. He'll ensure that all the sports have the equipment that they need for the season. Hold presentation or preseason meetings with the athletes and the parents to go over clearance requirements, eligibility requirements. He's going to go to the practices to make sure that the coaches are following through and ensuring athletes on the field are cleared for participation. Who's going to hold the beginning of the year meetings with ASB advisors to review ASB rules and law, the house bill, 1660 rules? Who's going to go over their requisitions, PO invoices, processes? Who's going to process a fail list from the third trimester for this current school year from household and PHS to go for eligibility for the fall season? And who's going to establish who's going to be eligible for, or ineligible for the five weeks? And who's going to process the weekly rate checks from there on out? There's going to be meeting with parents and the students regarding eligibility. Or who's going to be running their runnings, our eligibility or home school eligibility? And it's going to be going over the WIAA standards for eligibility and reporting. Who's going to manage the WIAA regulations for eligibility, conduct violations and reporting? Who's going to check the field, courts, pools and other competition and practice spaces for safety of our athletes? I think you have rosters with names, positions, jersey numbers from coaches and upload that information to the CWA athletic website. Who's going to conduct a weekly AD check-in meetings or go to the monthly AD meetings, which are often offsite? Who's going to figure out transportation information for each team and enter it into arbiter.com? Or complete the transportation forms and turn them into the transportation department. And keep it in mind while doing this, what time do they need to arrive? How long is it going to take to get there? What time do they need to leave Crosse? Is this going to result in an early dismissal from school? And is this going to take away from the already low number of bus drivers? Who's going to schedule the workers, the volunteers, the paramedics or officials for contests? Who's going to supervise spectators and students at home and away contests? Who's going to reschedule the games, officials, workers, volunteers, paramedics and transportation of contests when needed? Who's going to assisting guiding student athletes with the NCAA Eligibility Center? And who's checking the student body activities for safety and equity? Who's reviewing ASB building districts, state health department guidelines before approving student activities? And who's going to approve athletic and ASB requisitions and purchase orders? Who's going to have oversight of athletic and ASB budgets? Who's going to manage and have knowledge of the following online sites and programs? Skyward, arbiter.com, family ID, cwhathletic.com, NFHS, hometownticketing.com, crosserathletics.com, biz swap, wiaa.com, CWA league site, YBI site, NCAA Eligibility Center and Pixalot. So that was my list. And this may seem like a very extensive list, but I want to remind you. I'm Laura Boglak. I'm the ASB and Athletic Secretary at the high school. I'm the one who assists the athletic director. And for those of you who know Kevin and myself, I personally think I'm the bunny one of the two. But I'm not the athletic director. And I'm certain that he could create a far more extensive list. And you actually may be even wondering where he is today. He's still dutifully fulfilling his athletic director duties and he's attending an award night at Housel Middle School right now. Who will also be missing an athletic director next year. So please, I want to end by asking again just for guidance and a plan for the summer and fall seasons for the 2223 school year.
I see my time is next to here. Susan. Just want to reiterate just a little bit, please. We do want to hear all your, all your, your comments. If we could please try to keep them as brief as we can. We've got a lot of comments to get through. I don't know, I don't know how many we have on Zoom if we have any, but we want to get to everybody, but we've still got to conduct the business of the board. So if you don't mind, I would appreciate it if you kept it pretty quick and brief. Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
My name is Susan Wierga and I teach science at the high school. And last Friday, the teachers at the high school sent a letter to the district administration and the Crosse School Board about the proposed change in graduation requirements. And I just wanted to read that letter tonight because I know it's easy to get things lost in email inboxes and all. So this is, that's all I'm going to use with the letter that we sent last Friday. So it was dated last Friday. It says, "Request for information." This letter is regarding the proposed change in graduation requirements. The proposal would reduce the amount of credits required to graduate from 26 to 24 credits. We request an informative discussion of the pros and cons of this proposal prior to its adoption. The purpose of this request is to gain an understanding of the decision's impact on Crosse High School students, teachers and district finances. This information will help teachers effectively participate in discussions and promote an atmosphere of transparency with both parents and students. Specifically, we would like to discuss the following questions prior to the adoption proposal. Number one, what outcome is the district striving to achieve with the reduction in graduation requirements? Number two, how does the reduction of credits affect how colleges and parents view the rigor of our program? Number three, if a proposal is designed to address financial issues, how does the reduction of graduation requirements translate to a reduction in cost to the district? Number four, if a proposal is designed to improve graduation rates, how does the reduction in graduation requirements improve graduation rates and to what degree? And then number five says on May 25th, 2022, that was the last, at the last board meeting, a list of concerns was presented to the school board. What are your responses to these concerns? And there's a link to that document. And it says, "We, the teachers of Crosse High School, understand that the Crosse School Board has the authority to make this decision. We are seeking open internal discussions in order to facilitate our inclusion in the decision-making process." And my understanding is that we are going to be, some of us will be meeting at the, at the summit session next week. And thank you for that opportunity. And that's all.
Thank you. And I think to speak to that, that discussion was tabled at the last meeting. Or so we could have a discussion next Wednesday.
Yes.
Just on that specific topic. I think we've got another one for you later.
Yes. So we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Anne Donaldson?
Good evening again. I'm going to skip the first part. Just know that this is not my first book with them. Credits for graduation. I follow Susan. We must maintain the rigor and challenge of the programs here in the Crosse School District, or we risk disabling those who choose to attend the best colleges in the United States. Even those students who currently exit Crosse High School and attend two-year colleges or trade schools, or those who go directly into the workforce, they carry with them a notion of success because they have completed a course of study that prepares them for the world. And they have been trained by people who care about them, the education they grasp and the manner in which they approach life. Respect the teachers as professionals. Listen to us. Do not reduce the credit requirements. We cannot scrap those components, nor can we exclude from the overall program an individual who knows so well the intricacies, complexities and bestments of the service, Kevin Lust, who still in the midst of all this turmoil was working this last week and dealing with kids. Further, because education and its nature and magnitude stand somewhere between worship, war and sport, it is really a big deal. And most of you, neither separately nor together, seem to grasp the favorable impact Mr. Lust has made upon the students, faculties, communications, facilities and programs. Beyond that, there has been talk of reducing the pay of those responsible for some of the extracurricular activities or those activities themselves. If this were the case, it would be a soundly poor judgment. Sometimes those activities are all that keeps particular kids in school where we can help guide, direct or listen to them. Then, a school board meeting during senior week. Finally, in case you missed it, we're not going away. We do not come here to gripe nor bellyache. We are constituents and we vote. Also, are we carrying a 10% budget surplus? Other districts carry 5%, don't they? Other ideas? Upkeep of the grounds. Also, six o'clock is a terrible time to hold a meeting. Let's see if we can't return to seven. Thank you.
Jump to same days. Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody's put their name in the chat and nobody is on mute.
Thank you. Monica, you have my.
No, wait, this is the dog. I just, you felt a little bit.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. That sounds like a cutie off.
And I would hope you did. My name is Monica Flores Newmeyer. My kids went to Crosse. They started, the oldest was fifth, sixth grade and then fourth, and then probably I guess Tommy came on. Originally was in Sunnyside. I am from Sunnyside. And I just want to take first a thank, a thank you to Crosse in that I talked to Peter Paul about this. Actually, that's why I thought I'd bring it up. Peter and I both from Sunnyside. We have the opportunity and the blessing to say that we have two hometowns because of how we were welcomed in and how our kids have been treated. I have grandkids down and I don't know what happened. I don't know when it happened. But we have to admit something has happened. That is a part of leadership. Leadership is accountability. It is not ego. It is not agenda, personal agenda. It is not getting mad at someone. It is communication, even if it is unpleasant. As Peter and I talk, sorry, keep bringing in this Peter. Our theme makes you feel better. Even if it's something that isn't comfortable to hear, we're adults. We still deserve to hear it. If you are unsure if you can say it, ask your attorneys. You have them, you pay for them. Ask their counsel. Having the feedback of you don't understand the bigger picture or there's more to the story is honestly quite foolish on your part. Because it makes it sound like the individual that we're referring to has done something illogical, is not a good person. I strongly suggest you stop saying it and find a right way to say things. And funny enough, that wasn't what I was going to come here to say, but I was all motivated. I actually came here to put some perspective. This was very last minute for me. I suddenly decided to speak. So I came to the school board meeting on, it was, I believe, May 25th. I probably have to be a phone. And I spoke. I think I included a little bit of emotion. The rest did a very good job of including emotion. I believe I referred to the AD by his name only twice. And I even asked for clarification if my questions, comments or concerns were correct. And I asked for feedback. And I waited. The next day I did receive a text message from the president. I was very appreciative of that. His text was though, "Thank you so much for your kindness to the board." I can't go into, and I'm paraphrasing. I can't go into detail. It was a very hard decision, but there's more to the story. I replied back, "I totally understand." Small towns like ours, we're, it's a blessing and a curse. We are a family. And we treat each other as family. And sometimes that family unit can be a hurdle in trying to communicate something difficult. But we're family and it still, it still deserves to be said. And I waited. And I heard nothing else. Do you realize what you guys said in that text to me? You didn't acknowledge my concerns. You didn't answer my questions. You didn't tell me when you were going to respond back. You just thanked me for complimenting you and understanding you. This board, those seats, ladies and gentlemen, are not your individual seats. There are positions aside of those. There are rules. There are criterias. There are expectations. And I, I'm sorry if this means attacking all of you. I'm trying to make sure to look at all of you so you don't feel like picking on all of you. And I know this is a very passionate subject. And for me, this isn't about the AD. This is a bigger situation about it all around. I don't know why there's no communication. You guys are a school board. If you're not sure how to communicate or not sure what you should do, take a look at your students. What is a student supposed to do? They come in, they do the work, they get it done and they plan for their future. Please do the work, get it done and plan for our future. There's nothing wrong, and you feel free to show your work because we would love to see it. I don't think we're asking too much for communication. I think it's amount of respect. I know some of you could say, "I don't live here anymore. It shouldn't matter to me." But I love this town. I'm very proud of it and I'm thankful. And so I'm going to stay and I'm going to show up and I'm going to ask the questions. I hope you all consider it is no offense to you. I just think it's deserved by all. Because quite honestly, and I don't remember who said it, there is fear. And that's the reason I came back and stepped in was because I had a group of people asking me to speak because they were scared. And yes, it was staffed. So you have, you have business owners that are worried of what will happen. You have citizens that are worried what will happen. You have parents that are worried what will happen. We all want to be on the same page. It shouldn't be that hard to get there and have faith in us. Maybe we, why we want to unlock what you say, we very well may respect it. And if someone next to me doesn't respect it, I'll have your back. Because at least if you have, give us the facts. Opinion. People will always have a personal opinion. There will be hurt feelings. That's what makes us care for one another. But the facts, please, please start communicating. Those parents deserve it. Your community deserves it. And I know they threatened that they could vote you out, but is that a way we want to go? Do we all want to be mad at each other like this? We don't deserve this. You're all better than this. I know each one of you, most of you, on an individual level. I've seen the kindness you give, the patience and the understanding. Give it now. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I'm Claire Fadelford. I am retired teacher from here after 30 years. And I'm here tonight to kind of give you a little history on why PHS went from 24 to 26 credits to speed that background. So when the state raised the requirements to 24, the staff at PHS looked at what was going to be best for our students. Based on the failure rate at our school, we knew that we had to do something that would give wiggle room for those students. We aren't talking about the one student who failed math. We're talking about students who were failing two or three or even more classes. If we stayed on a six-period day, they could earn 24 credits with no room for failure. At that time, PHS staff went into action. We looked at a seven-period day. We looked at block scheduling. We looked at trimester and we looked at keeping it as a six-period day. Many staff meetings were held. Pros and cons of all those options were discussed. We also had to look at six-period versus five-period. So much to consider. Long meetings, not only on Wednesday workdays, but on our own time, out there trying to figure out what was best for our kids. After months of meeting, it was decided to go to the trimester to allow flexibility for students. With the decision to move to a trimester, it meant that students would be earning 7.5 credits a year and could actually reach 24. and could actually reach 24 in three years plus a try. We knew that wasn't gonna work. So they opted to move to 26 so that students would be staying on campus throughout their four years. The proposal of 26 credits went to the board and was adopted. The staff then jumped in to create new classes that would interest students and give them a broader educational experience. It was not the perfect first go-round. We all lived it, we know. We all had to adjust, teachers and students. And yes, we heard in the class of 2019. I heard it from my daughter in that class. I have all my credits. I don't need to stay. Being the mean parents. A child with two parents as teachers, yes, you get to go all four years to high school and you get to take all classes and stay there all day long. This is where my tip from all concerned, need to work with students, teachers, counselors, administration, and parents. Use this time after all requirements are met to try something new. Take a street class, try a different art class, take a shop class. For some, ELA may be a passion, so take another English class. Music, thanks to Mr. Norris, new classes were being added for kids. There are so many elective classes that students will benefit from, whether they're going to post-secondary or the world of work. Personal finance, foods class, accounting, marketing, advanced computer class. And all of this is free to our students. So you're probably wondering where I'm going with this. And why you understand, the PHS staff had two goals. One was to be sure that those students who were struggling had support and would be able to succeed. Second was to give our students the opportunity to explore classes outside of the class classroom. I ask that before you make any decisions about credits at PHS, that you meet with the staff. Listen to them. Understand the logistics of the change. Most importantly, have faith in them. They're good. So let's not require the minimum of our students. Let's support them to reach for more. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Taylor Munoz.
I had to run downstairs and change back. Okay, so I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Taylor Munoz and I have been a special education teacher in the district for six years. And I'm a former Crosser High School graduate, the class of 2011. As many of you know, my parents are employees in the Crosser School District and have been nearly my whole life. When I left to go to college, I never had any doubt in my mind that I wanted to come back to Crosser and work in this community to give back to the place that shaped me and hopefully make a difference for future Mustangs. This is my home and always has been. My husband grew up here and is a Mustang, and our son will be a Mustang someday as well. Not only do I teach here, but I've also coached here for five years in our district's volleyball programs. Throughout this school year, I've been watching silently and tried to continue my work with students with their best interests in my mind. As our town has descended into turmoil and our school board meetings have become something that is, quite frankly, most closely resembling a circus. I have defended our town and district to many. And as surrounding areas begin to view this situation as lackable. On Tuesday, following a meeting to develop an IEP with the students' parents, I received word of something that made me question why I am needed working here in the first place. The school board requested that families who have opted out of Crosser School District send information in about why they made that choice. While I understand the district is not perfect, I implore you to think about the ways that you are attempting to collect information for district improvement. The school board allowed individuals whose names are protected and kept as initials or anonymous to submit lengthy complaints citing names of individuals who currently work or have worked in the district. Making claims about them with no foundation for such claims or protection for the individuals that they were listed. My name was explicitly included first and last in a document compiled and posted on the district website for the entire community, district, and any individual who clicked on the link to see. The claim made about me was that I engaged in unethical behavior. My name was listed with administrators, full names as well, and other teachers. By the nature of the information provided and the initials, I know who the individual is that submitted this completely untrue claim. This is an individual who made multiple years of my work life unbearable, continually harassing me and targeting me for no apparent reason other than their own agenda. I endured this person's behavior, hoping it would go away if I did my own work and did not interact with the individual. I finally had to submit a formal request for a meeting with my administrator and the individual when the behavior became so unethical and unbearable that I could not continue to ignore it. It was beginning to risk affecting my students and their parents who put their trust in me to work with their kids. This person had no aspect of their job involved in my department, yet was continuing to ask teachers to meet them in their office to speak about the work and decisions being made with my students. And slandering the hard work and advocacy I was giving for my students to receive time in their general education classes. I had thought after our meeting that this issue was fairly resolved, being that this individual no longer worked in the district for the past two years. And I had minimal to no contact with them even through the end of their time in the district. Then to find that this individual, who I reported for unethical behavior, was given the stage by our school board to write libelous statements about myself and others, dragging my name through the mud with no repercussions. Having this posted by an attorney to the website allowing myself, my family, and my career to be harmed completely disgusts me. As I sat there with my union president and watched him make upwards of five phone calls over more than an hour to our superintendent and multiple school, school board members and explained that not only is this unacceptable, it is unlawful and opening the district up to legal issues, all I could feel was shock. Shocked that not one of those people would do what was right. Shocked that not one of those people, even though it had been stated over and over again that this was unacceptable, when it was so obviously unacceptable, until finally, one member stated that they would look into it. I thought to myself, "School board, you wanna know why people are leaving?" It's because when one of your own is thrown in harm's way for completely unfounded and untrue statements, you do nothing to defend them. You do nothing to help them. You protect an anonymous individual over your own employees. And these are the employer, and these are the people we're trusting to help our students. You've made it possible for others to attack people. You're putting your own agendas in front of everything else. And I considered myself a true Mustang, never desired to work anywhere else. That changed on Tuesday. You want people to stay? Do something for the kids and staff, not yourselves. Thank you.
I am really happy. Just to clarify, I have several statements, one for myself, one from Eva, and then one from another person. Is that okay if I can help you do that?
Can you blend them a little bit? Go for it.
They are all very important. Okay, my name is Elise Mills. I am speaking on behalf of Eva Petra, who is my colleague. Go ahead and get to it. The following is the thoughts of a person who wrote it. We know that our administration is working within their means to create a successful school experience, and we appreciate them for doing everything within their power to support the classroom needs in their building. Thank you. Good evening, Crosser School, School Board. My name is Eva Petra. I am a parent of two Housel Middle School students and educator with Crosser School District for the last eight years. I apologize for not being in attendance tonight. My sons have an award ceremony at Housel and parent meeting trumps teacher meeting. Luckily, I have friends who are willing to make sure the voice is heard tonight. For that, I am grateful. I am writing to each of you in hopes that we will find a common ground. I know the goal of our schools is to support.
I'm getting headache. Let's go.
We want the best education possible for everyone that walks through our doors. How then is that a possibility with some classroom sizes pushing 30 already for next year due to the loss of a current grade level position? Beginning of the year, numbers usually adjust and additional classes could be negatively affected as well. My goal is for you to understand the real issues we are creating with the guise of balancing a budget. All evidence-based research will be included to you that at the end of this letter, and as I hope you will use it to provide actionable steps to support all Crosser classrooms. I know we can find an agreeable solution to a very important problem. According to the Washington Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, our current report card for Crosser School District has our learners passing the Smarter Balance Assessment at 25% in math and 23.9% in ELA play for the 2018-2019 school year. The last two years' information is not public, but I would venture, like to guess, COVID did not do us any favors. When I look at this report card, I ask myself what can be done. As a parent, I want to have a strong educational experience with my sons. As a teacher, I want the resources and the ability to reach every learner in my classroom. Yet I see on the same website a statistic that states that our students-to-teacher ratio is 13 to 1 in my building. Then I realize the entire picture is not apparent. This takes all educators in our building and averages them against every student. To have effectiveness instruction, support programs need some smaller class sizes to reach those learners who are two, two, three, even four years below their current grade level. This ratio is an inaccurate representation of what our general education classroom looks like. When I realize that same issue is present in our district. As board members, you are looking at numbers. You have an inaccurate idea of what your decision causes and the ramifications to the very people who voted for you to be in your position. Please understand, I am evaluated on a group work every year for my effectiveness as an educator. I am put on paper my ability to reach families, address academic holes, work well with my team, and create a learning environment that allows every student to thrive. How is it that I have proven myself year after year and yet the board can make inappropriate decisions that negatively affects the very families they were elected to serve? Especially when stakeholders and community members bring it to your attention. It costs one teacher salary to bring class sizes down four to five kids in fourth grade. One teacher salary. We have four fourth-grade positions becoming three and five fifth-grade positions becoming four. This will influence instructional practices and quality of education. I find it hard to believe that any stakeholder, taxpayer, parent, or educator would be arguing for larger class sizes under the guise of balancing a budget. We have a reserve fund balance for a reason. Please use it. These students deserve an equitable class size and our community deserves the very best. At this point, I'm gonna cut down a little bit. We know class size matters because it allows the teacher greater proximity to students and thus more opportunities for one-to-one and small group instruction. The one constant in every room with smaller numbers of students is simply the proximity of teacher, teacher to all their students. That's it. The board knows this. You ran on this with the levies for the learning advertisements, mailers, and videos. Roughly a minute into the informational video you sent out about the levy, a student asks about smaller class sizes. The teacher shared levy support the general budget and in return provides support to class sizes. It is directly impacted by the very levy the district pushed so hard for the voters to approve. I trusted you. I have trusted you with my sons for the past eight years. I am trusting you now. We have a cash reserve for Crosser. We have money in the district to provide support to the only thing that should be supported with that money, the students. When the next levy vote comes, when your positions come up for reelection, when our students need you, what will you do? Will you step up or will you balance your budget? Thank you. A little bit shorter, I promise. The following message is the thoughts of a person who wrote it. I know that our administration is working within our means to create a successful school experience.
Is this yours?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, it is me. This is the person who have done this, so. Is working within their means to create a successful school, school experience, and I appreciate them for doing everything within their power to support the classroom needs in their building. Thank you. My name is Elise Mills. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Crosser Heights Elementary. Unlike most of my wonderful colleagues speaking tonight, I am also a Crosser High School graduate, class of '09. My unique perspective as both a student and educator in the Crosser School District speaks to my vested interests in the outcomes of this district's performance in turning out well-rounded, intelligent, kind human beings into the world. I know the teachers who taught me here in Crosser through my time as a student made such a massive impact on my own growth as a person. I hope I've done them proud. I am speaking tonight on behalf of my fellow educators. My colleagues have done an amazing job of illustrating to you how dissolving a fifth-grade class as well as yet another fourth-grade class will affect the students we have been tasked to instruct. I stand with their statements wholeheartedly. However, I am not here to speak about students. I am here to speak directly about the effect this move will have on teachers and teachers alone. While it is true that there is no school without students, the same can be said about teachers. A school does not function if you do not have teachers. Collapsing a class and causing the surrounding classes to balloon to unmanageable numbers will have a cascading impact felt throughout the district. This, these conditions will alienate and burn out the teachers that stay, which will result in even more teacher turnaround, thus negatively affecting the district long-term because of the reputation we will have throughout the valley. The number one thing I remember from my best training, my first year, was my mentor saying the Tri-Cities loves Crosser because they train their teachers and then they send their best to Richland, Pasco, and Pennebun. Even before this, the district has had a retention issue. It is ludicrous that you would think collapsing these classes would not have a negative impact on that. You are removing our support staff. You are providing us no resources to be able to perform our jobs effectively and efficiently. We are not expendable. We are professionals. We deserve to be treated with respect. And with respect to you, the board, I vehemently oppose the direction you are steering our district to. I urge you in the meeting, you to find a more equitable way to balance your budget. Thank you.
Amy Omen?
Holloman, yes. Like Elise, I will also be speaking for another one of my colleagues as well afterwards. But first, it's me. So to begin, I would like to reiterate that this is my own personal decision to speak here today. I recognize and I appreciate the advocacy and support of my Heights administration on this issue. My name is Kaylee Holloman, and I'm a current fifth-grade teacher at Heights Elementary. It is my first full school year because of COVID as a fifth-grade teacher. Researchers say that on average educators make at least 1,500 decisions every day. If you're a teacher, you know that is true. Our students are at the core of every decision that we make. I strongly believe that this sentiment should bring true in every sector of a school community. For this reason, I am here today to emphasize the importance of and to urge the board to reconsider the allotment of teaching positions, specifically the collapse of the fourth and fifth-grade positions at Heights Elementary. The proposed cuts would result in class sizes that are counterintuitive to the level of student achievement that the board expects and that our students deserve. Currently, fourth-grade teachers at Heights Elementary have class sizes that average 28 students. With the collapse of two positions next year, not only will those same fourth- not only will those same fourth-grade teachers be asked to teach a class of thirty-one students approximately, but our fifth-grade staff will also have class sizes potentially nearing of the twenty-eight each if the decision to collapse the fifth-grade class in addition holds. These numbers do not take into consideration potential for additional influx of students as a result of late enrollment or entry into the district. I wholeheartedly believe that class sizes directly impact teacher effectiveness and student achievement. And I invite anybody who feels differently to substitute in a class of twenty-two students and then the next day substitute in a class of thirty-plus students. I love my students and as a teacher, I will do anything in my power to help them be successful as learners and as individuals. And I know that my colleagues believe the same. If we truly believe that students should come first, I am asking you to please look at the data, listen to educators within your district and do what is best for our community. Thank you. I'm just kind of nervous, so. Okay, oh, I'm fine, I can do deep. Okay, now I am Nathan Harris, an incredible fourth-grade teacher at Prosser Heights. It is no secret that smaller class sizes have a positive correlation with student performance and learning outcomes. This isn't new research and is easily defined with the most prominent being the Tennessee Star Experience. Mathis' paper has a summary of the results and notes that smaller class sizes provided more personalized attention and more time per student for instruction. However, I'm not going to talk about the academic side. I will instead focus on the other needs that are not being met. If we look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we see that before a student can learn, they need to have some needs met. Currie's article covers this further, but I'll summarize the pyramid and compare it to my own personal experiences. The first tier is physiological needs. Are you getting enough to eat, have a place to sleep, staying comfortably warm or cool and other basic needs to live? Unfortunately, we are currently not even meeting all of these. Our students do receive food at school and most have a bed to sleep, though not all have this. However, those staying at the old Prosser High School have had it rough. Prosser is a desert and it gets hot to life-threatening levels and though I hate complaining, I will do so in this to prove a point. This all has a cumulative effect on the students and the whole picture must be seen to understand what you are asking of the students. We've had multiple days in the classroom where the temperatures have reached in the nineties. There is one tiny portable air conditioner suitable for a small one-hundred-square-foot room in a room full of twenty-nine people. Still, we continue to make do with what we can wearing light clothes, water, and if there isn't enough amount of smoke, opening the windows. This is just the first straw, however, and we still have three other tiers to climb before students can self-actualize and want to learn. The next tier is safety and it's the biggest one on everyone's mind lately. The time of that kind of thing doesn't happen in Prosser are over. We shouldn't have to constantly explain to a group of nine and ten-year-old students that yes, I will stop anything that comes through the door from getting to you. I leave out the harsher realities that I will likely not survive the encounter, but I would gladly do it. The darkest secret that all teachers hide is that we all hope that we won't know the attacker. Having a larger class size means that I must take longer to secure my room. I must make harder choices, like I know I have most of my students in here, but they have been cycling out to the bathroom all day, so do I have to open the door in hopes it's them coming back? Or do I leave it shut and keep safe those that I can? This is the darker area of having a larger class, but again, the whole picture must be seen to fully understand the problem. More kids means longer periods of time when a portion of my students are out of supervision on bathroom trips, office visits, note running and all those little hallway times that are routine parts of our school functions. It also makes it harder to keep track of everyone should I have a student that is a runner or has other difficulties. While there are procedures to cover this, larger class sizes again puts further stress on us all. The next tier is love slash belonging. COVID has been very hard on my class. We have had a lot of post-calls that my students are still processing. There has been a lot of deaths with some students losing up to five family members. When you have a large class size, it's hard to give every student the love and attention they need. Everyone wants to feel important, everyone needs to know that they are at least loved. When there is a large class, students keep quiet and hide because they are afraid. They've already lost so much and they don't want you to be one more to add to the list. In their head, the best way to avoid this is to not have the relationship. I know this because it's how I used to date and I promised that I wouldn't let this cycle continue to repeat. With a large class size, there isn't enough time to build a relationship with everyone. Most students will not move up the pyramid if they feel that you do not care. The next tier before students become concerned with personal growth is esteem. A student needs to feel valued by their group. In a larger group, it is easier to get lost in a herd and to know that it doesn't matter if you try because somebody else will always have the answer before you do. Then, even if the teacher does randomly call on you, what does it matter? There are so many students that I might not call on for dates. I've seen it time and time again. If I just keep my head down and keep quiet, I won't get called on. I used to do it all the time in school. A larger class size makes it easier to hide and reduces the opportunities for students to perform and feel valued by the community. Now we've made it to the top and we're actually at self-actualization. But how many of the students have made it to the top? What was once seen as individual smaller problems is actually part of a larger system that is weighing down our students further and further. A larger class size has a broad impact on all aspects of a student's life. They spend most of their waking moments at school during the school year. In any given week, I may see these children more than their parents. It's heartbreaking to see them settle when I know that we can do better. There was a time when pride would not have allowed this, when Prosser Pride would have done better. But I'm always reminded of a quote when I think of Prosser. Pride is good until it is bad. We can't continue to be in denial of short-term problems and keep ignoring this bigger picture. We've become too reactionary and will turn on ourselves as soon as things don't go our way. However, I still have hope for what was, is and can be. We all do or we have left already. Please consider the full cost of your decisions because while money problems may last a year or more, the ramifications of large class sizes will stay with those students for a lifetime. Thank you.
Good evening, Prosser School Board. I would initially like to thank the board for their time and service to the district. I would like to emphasize that I speak on my own accord and fully comprehend and appreciate the efforts of my administrator to advocate on behalf of this matter. I speak from my own perspective as an educator and a parent. I would echo the sentiments of my colleagues and urge the board to reconsider their allotment of teaching positions specifically for Heights in the upcoming school year. My name is Jennifer Hartsfield, I'm currently the fifth-grade bilingual teacher at Heights and have successfully completed my first year of teaching. I reside in West Richland, however, came to the Prosser School District because of the bilingual program. Despite this year being a difficult one resulting from the aftermath of COVID, I believe I have had a successful first year in the Prosser, not only because I was given the bilingual curriculum to effectively perform my job, but I was mentored and supported by an incredible administrator, staff and grade-level team. My prior teaching coursework at WSU along with my graduate degrees from North Carolina and areas of global studies solidified ideas of equity and community and teaching practices. Sentiments that I have carried into my own classroom and of which I hold sacred to my newly professional. I have experienced this community not only with my students this year, but also with my colleagues at Heights. I came to Prosser to make a difference, but I never expected to acquire friends at the end of the year. These teachers have been the backbone of my teaching experience and I am thankful for the community we have built every year. I am deeply concerned about the decision to remove teaching positions from Heights as it will not only affect class size and teacher-student ratio, but I believe will negatively impact the community that has been established with our students and our teachers. If either the fifth-grade or fourth-grade positions are eliminated, I will have seventeen students in my classroom being the bilingual teacher, whereas my colleagues will have roughly ten additional students at the beginning of the year, not addressing future enrollment throughout the year. How is this equitable, not only to the benefit of our students, but to our teachers? I believe this decision will have serious ramifications down the road. As a parent of three children who attend Richland Public Schools, I would be deeply concerned if one of my children were in a classroom with disorganization size. I respectfully urge the board to reconsider reinstating the teaching positions at Heights. Thank you for your time.
Christine Means.
Nina.
Wearing a water hat.
I, yeah, yes. I am here again to speak on behalf of a colleague, Christine Means, I am Elise Mills. To reiterate, these are the views of the person who wrote this and we are not trying to reflect back on the administration. Dear Prosser School Board and District Administration, I regret I am not able to attend this meeting in person since I am attending family members' graduation from Delta High School today. I want to thank all the teachers and community members who have turned out at this meeting to highlight the class size and staffing issues at the elementary level. I understand the urge to have a balanced budget. No business owner wants to look at their balance sheet and see they are operating at a deficit. And a school district is no different. This hypothetical business owner, to decrease their deficit, would have to make the tough choice of where to cut funds. Should the quality of their product be decreased? Should staff be asked to do more with fewer resources? Should staff be replaced if a person leaves the position? As a school district, our products are the students we graduate. Each student is a carefully built year by year by various staff members. Teachers in a way are a slow assembly line who refine and teach academic and social skills through the experiences in the classroom. Just like equipment in the assembly line, when these teachers are overwhelmed, poorly supported or not replaced, the resulting products can suffer damages. This is why class size matters. Teachers cannot serve students to their fullest potential when class sizes are high. When class sizes are high, the teachers later down this assembly line have to catch students up because teachers in previous years were overwhelmed. Students and teachers both suffer in this situation. This brings me to the staffing issues for the fourth-grade team at Heights Elementary. Traditionally, this teaching team has had six members, one of which is a dedicated bilingual classroom that has a set class list. Last year, a teacher left the team for another district position. So for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we had five teachers, four of which were general education teachers and one primary teacher. Despite the application of Principal Saban hired level district administration refused to hire ever-fourth-grade teacher. This meant that four, the four general education teachers started the school year with twenty-seven or twenty-eight students in their classroom. These class members were consistent throughout the school year. Next year, we face another staff defect. One of our general education teachers is retired and the district administration say they won't replace the staff members. Now our grade level will have four teachers. Again, one of those is a bilingual classroom, so there will be three general education fourth-grade teachers. It is projected since this incoming class is on the small side that we will again start the year with twenty-eight kids in each general education class if no more fourth-grade students enroll in the district. Principal Saban continues to ask district leadership for permission to hire another fourth-grade teacher and has been refused. This is unfair to the teachers or the students. With the diverse academic and social needs of our students, pride and might, we teachers cannot meet student needs as well in large class sizes. We return to this assembly line metaphor. Fourth grade has become a problem area in the machinery of our district because staffing isn't being properly maintained. Yes, decisions about budget cuts are tough, but I ask the board and district administrations to keep this question in mind when making these decisions. Since we are in the business of educating the future members of our community, should decisions be made that sacrifice the quality of their education? Please remember, our business is education and our students are worth the investment of hiring another teacher. Some fairly pristine needs, fourth-grade teacher.
Okay, so I am here myself. My name's Alexander Rojas. And I'm a one-on-one bilingual speaker from the Prosser Elementary. My job is to support classes that have behavior issues. And I have mainly been with the fifth-grade classes this year and as always has been a crazy roller coaster this year. Especially this year after coming back full-time from fall to spring. As a parent, I've seen and heard everything, I've seen and stopped fights, but also kids cussing, talking about genitals, students at the school talking about it, you know. Every single thing a student, especially a fifth grader, or anyone should be thinking about. Now, I believe that instead of cutting teachers, parents or moving them around, we need all the help that we can get. The fifth-grade teachers that I've been working with this year have been one of the best. They have young, wise, energetic, amazing vibes that we need in the district. And moving them around, obviously doesn't help, we need chemistry in this, in this district. Chemistry that helps to become better teachers and help out other kids, so making up, so we can also tell them, hey, we should be getting along with everybody, you know. Having too many plus kids is gonna make that hard, it's not going to improve. So, I'm not saying that the teachers and parents can't manage, but can manage that of having too many plus kids. But it would be much easier for everyone, teachers, students and you guys to have a better district. So please, guys, think about, with all the respect, think about the nice decisions you guys made. So then I can say that I'm proud of being an employee to a possible district.
Angela Ski.
I have some family members that are out there trying to listen, the sound isn't super great, they're telling me. So if they wanna or feel led to come in and stand, that would be welcomed by me as family support. Some of them are my own children, so watching their mom do something that's a little bit out of the comfort zone. Members of the Prosser School Board, thank you for this opportunity for me to speak tonight as a community member. When I was timing my speech this week, it was only four minutes, Jason, so I think I'm gonna stick with it.
Not leaving tonight?
I'm a community member, a teacher and a parent. And I've resided in Prosser since nineteen ninety and have taught in the Prosser School District for twenty-three years. On Saturday, I watched my second child walk across the stage at graduation in our soccer stadium. In addition, I have two more children who attend Prosser Schools along with my husband, who teaches right next door to me in the social studies department at PHS. To say the Skiing Family is invested in the Prosser Schools is an understatement. We love our community and we love being a part of the Prosser Mustang family. A little over two weeks ago at the last board meeting, I joined a few hundred people in this auditorium, well, I thought we were gonna be down in the auditorium tonight, and listened to twenty-four community members speak in support of Kevin Lusk remaining as the AD at PHS. Tonight, I wish to echo their points and remind the board of the community support that stands behind Kevin Lusk. At the previous board meeting, one of the speakers, Kyler Bockoffner, read a list of over twenty points concerning the duties of our current AD and his wife tonight did a wonderful job with more of those points. His points ranged from liability concerns to safety, to transportation, to scheduling. I want to encourage the board to remember his points. They were excellent ones in illustrating the enormity of the job of athletic director, a position you expect a teacher to fill as a stipend or give to an already maxed-out building administrators. This solution clearly spells catastrophe by those who are closest to Prosser. This solution clearly spells catastrophe by those who are closest to Prosser Mustang Athletics. I want to encourage you to heed their advice. Listen to their wisdom, please. Prosser High School needs a full-time AD. At that same board meeting two weeks ago, we heard very articulate speeches from our current PHS students in support of Mr. Lusk. A few days later, over three hundred kids chose to participate in a walkout during second period to show their support for Mr. Lusk. Please return to their speeches and listen to their words, but also observe their actions. They support Mr. Lusk and value him as an educator at PHS. I want to encourage you to do the same. Value him as an employee. When budget cuts to a school system are needed, a common practice is to make cuts the furthest away from the students. Cutting the AD impacts hundreds of students on a daily basis. This is not a cut furthest from the students. If anything, this is the cut to the very core that defines our student athletes. Kevin has helped define PHS for decades. I want to encourage you to consider other avenues of budget expenditures and cuts that are away from the heart and soul of many of our students. Kevin Lusk is an educator that I have known for thirty-two years. I had him as a teacher, I had him as an AD, and I had him as an administrator. Hundreds, if not thousands of people, have their own Kevin story. I have many of those stories, including the days my babies were born, of how he mentored and called and he advised. And led me to be a better educator and a better person. You will not find a harder working employee for the students of Prosser High School and schools than this man. His work ethic is like no one I've ever known. He is a man of integrity and compassion. Over the years, he's had to make some very difficult decisions, which he has done with honesty. He is a leader who communicates efficiently. He listens and he serves. Kevin is a leader who puts students first and he works for them every day at PHS. Scholarship night earlier this week served as a perfect example of Kevin's dedication to our school. He graciously seamlessly stepped in to help Ryan Bailey out as the emcee for the awards night. His enthusiasm and professionalism was amazing to witness. For those board members who were at the Monday's event, I'm hopeful you were able to come to the realization, the amazing work ethic Kevin has. A work ethic and professionalism that we have been able to witness daily for over three decades. I'm deeply disappointed by the recent decisions for the Prosser Schools. Now is the right time to reconsider and revert, reverse it, the non-renewal of Kevin Lusk's contract. As athletic director at PHS, we need Kevin in our ranks at this time. Our kids deserve to have him as an AD. The community needs his energy and his dedication and PHS staff needs him as one of our trusted leaders. Is your decision-making concerning this matter supported by your stakeholders and supported by the community? You'll excuse me if I have to leave early. I have to be here tomorrow morning at six-thirty in the morning, along with my husband. To get ready for the senior breakfast, grad walk, and luncheon. That's really early. But you know what? Kevin will be here earlier, because that's what he does, is to help us pull it all off. And so that's just him. So thank you for your time. I hope I stayed under four minutes. Thank you.
Last thing, I didn't, I can't read this. Anita?
My name is Anita Quinn, and I taught in Prosser School District for forty-one years. And I came here from St. Joe's, and I loved it at St. Joe's at the Rock Hill School. And when I came here, it was just like teaching that school, the support, the kids, the community. So we're talking, it was nineteen seventy-seven, and it was unbelievable, the quality of the students. I remember it was my second year of teaching or third year of teaching. And I had school board members' kids, I had principals' kids, I had members out of the WSU Experiment Station. It was unbelievable. I'm here because, um, two weeks ago, I got a text. I was in Australia. And it said, please, please pray because we've got some tough stuff going on right now. And along with my daughter and notified the rest of my kids, we all came, we all got in on Zoom to find out what was happening. We were shocked that it was about Kevin Lusk. And when Angela said, um, that we all have our Kevin stories, we do. And when I listened to Erica talk about how Mr. Lusk followed her over for a scholarship, I was like, yeah, that's what he does. I was not only a teacher, but I was a coach for thirty years, middle school and the high school, pep club advisor, um. Duck laureate, staff, sunshine committee, and Kevin was always a hundred percent there. Kevin, actually, we shared a classroom when we first came to Prosser High School. He was part-time teacher and an athletic director, and we shared the science room together. I'm here because I, I'm confused. I just know there's probably another side to this story. And it's like, you know, I keep thinking, what did he do? What did he do that has caused this to happen? Four children through, through Prosser High School. They are Mustangs through and through. Three of them are in education and they always relate back to what Mr. Lusk did for them. My oldest, who's a, um, the assistant VP of Student Affairs at CDC owes that to Kevin Lusk because he got her to start at Western. Be, um, just being a staff person, and that led to the position she has now. And I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everybody talk and I, and there's a lot of issues going on. The academic issue, it's like, whoa, I didn't even know about that one. It's like, okay, the cutting of teachers, because I thought when I read all the brochures and everything on when the levy didn't pass. And when we were going at it a second time, that, that, that wouldn't happen, but I know that you gotta balance a budget. I live with a budget and it has to be balanced. So I understand that, but it's just, I mean, it was heartbreaking to hear these teachers talking. I think we've had some roller coaster years being here, all those times, like, that I just said to Mr. Adams, I remember when we took a pay cut back in about two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We actually took a pay cut, um, the teachers did, so that we wouldn't have the loss. And then I just thought, but now we're talking about athletic director. And I was talking to my own kids, my son worked for the WIAA. He said, that sounds like, and I'm not sure, I didn't even fact check it, but we would be the only two-way school in the state that doesn't have an athletic director. And I taught, I coached at middle school and I coached in high schools and, and both places, um, fall and spring. And I thought, wow, here this guy is doing both jobs. How does he do that? And then when I was watching the, um, the send-off assembly, I saw that online for the kids going to state, and there was Kevin. Knowing that he was gonna lose his job, but still doing a great job and the athletic banquet. And I watched that and I just thought, oh my gosh, this, I mean, I think I would have taken my ball and gone home. I just would have said, screw you guys, you know, you don't want me after all these years of, and I just. He's such a, had such integrity. And I remember the last incident, I remember I got called by the lawyer and I'm just. I remember saying to the lawyer, have you talked to this guy? Because he's amazing. And I know that I would have, if he had left, I probably would have gone to where he went because he was such a great person to work for. But as an athletic director, um, and Laura listed all those things. Cause I was here before we even, before, I mean, Mel Bowden was the athletic director, but our athletic code was still pretty, wasn't as strict as it is now. And I served on the board of review, many, many lunch hours, and what are we gonna do? And a teacher? A teacher to do all of those, if you give it as a stipend, it's like, how are they gonna do that? I know I'm talking fast because you have sat here for so long and I, I feel so lucky that we can come and we can express our thoughts. And, and I just, I'm just really, really confused. And why him? Why that? That's the only one that we've heard about. And I guess there's more coming. I, we haven't heard maybe from what the teachers were saying tonight. I don't know if teachers know that there'd be rift or cut or whatever you call it, but. But I just can't imagine not having an athletic director and asking a teacher to do that. I don't know how you take those phone calls in the middle of the night. I, you know, I remember, you know, having as a coach, having to call Kevin of different things that happened. Um, on our athletic events, and who would you call? Was it, you have a certain teacher? And when I was here last week for the, um, school board meeting, I just felt it was a little dysfunctional as far as. Like, what are we gonna do with the high school, the old high school? And I just thought, God, what's going on? Is there a plan? And I know there's gotta be, there's gotta be a plan. And I don't even, and I don't know, is it a done debt, done deal? It's like Kevin gone. I know you can't say. I know, cause I know one time I called school board members before and they said, we can't discuss it because it's a personnel issue. I'm like, okay, but I'm just, I'm really, really confused why this one person and how, how quick it was when I got that message. So far away from home and to get this message, please pray for us. We're in some real dire straits right now. And I just thought, wow, this is kind of scary. So, um, once I got on that board, I mean, I thought, okay, I gotta come to the school board meetings. Because we're a Mustang and I, I probably. When I go back, I grew up in California, and when I go back to a class reunion, I really don't know those people, but man, here. I can tell you where people live and who live in that house and, and the kids and the, um, you know, cause I, I was fortunate that I actually knew when it was time to retire. Because I was teaching, I think I had my eighth. Third generation where I had grandparents, the parents, and then the grandparent. And I knew it was probably time to go, but even though that, three generations. And so I just feel so fortunate to have, to have lived here and, um. And this is such a great place and Kevin is such a part of that, such a part of our family's life, uh, what he's done for, for our family and my kids. Thank you, school board. I know your job isn't easy. I have a, my husband was a school board member for eight years in the Grandin School District. And he talks a lot about how hard that job is and you have some big decisions to make, but I appreciate this time so much and, um, thank you.
This will not be more than about thirty-five minutes. I'm just, I'm kind of keeping your manners.
Were you all set that long?
Thank you for this chance to address you. My name's Mark Little. I just, this is my first year out after forty years as a Mustang. I also, I, I kind of started thinking about, Adam, I've also coached about sixty sports seasons since I've been here. So I've been, I, I, I would consider myself like Anita, I would consider myself a Mustang. Um, and I'd like to share a little bit of what I've learned and some things that I believe about education from my experience here. Uh, I've been really, really fortunate to work with just a bunch of incredible, um. Parents. I've had some of your kids, um, in athletics and in a classroom. Administrators, we've had some really great administrators here that I consider good friends. Fellow teachers, awesome people, but most importantly. Some incredible kids. That's what it's all about. To me, the most important thing we do as educators is we make, um, connections with kids and parents. Um, and other teachers and, and with each other. Kids do best when they know that somebody cares about them. Those, those connections are what, what kids, what kids think about. They, they need to know that, uh. Someone thinks about them, is checking up with them. You, you look back at when you were in school, what is it you remember? Is it your math lessons or your, uh. Social studies lessons? Do you remember the, the people that you went through? I can tell you, I've worked with Kevin, you know, he, he was, I was here when he got here for thirty-five years. And there is, I cannot name one person that even comes close to making connections with kids like Kevin has. You can tell by the way that this, this community has reacted to that, to that news. What he means to, to the kids and the parents and the, and, and listen to the people that have spoken before. It's huge what he has done. And, uh. You know. Another thing about Kevin is he was, not only made those connections, but he's great at his, at his job. He was, he, he does it, I mean, I, for many of the years that I coached, Kevin was the athletic director. It was, everything was always taken care of. Always taken care of. We never had to worry about buses and, 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 uh, referees and kids needing taken care of. He did all of that. Like, uh, like nobody that, that I've seen. Uh, he is also an ambassador for the Prosser Schools. I mean, when we go somewhere else, all the other athletic directors, even all these old coaches like me that have been around forever, they always want to know, you know, how's Kevin? What's up with Kevin? Couldn't ask for a better person to work with. I don't, I don't know that people understand just what a tough job an athletic director is. I think it's really short-sighted and unwise to eliminate that position. And, and I, I get it. I mean, I have one question for the school. I forgot to ask it. When you signed up for this, did you know it was gonna be this much fun?
It's in the syllabus. Barrel of munchies.
But I, I know you have a tough job and I know that the budget is a big, big deal. But I think it's unwise to think that somebody working less than full-time could be the athletic director. I'm a hundred percent sure that nobody or no combination of people could do it as well as the athletic director does it right now. And I can, I can promise you, nobody, uh, cares more about this community. You couldn't get somebody to do it more than what Kevin is. And, and this is stuff everybody knows. I also think how we treat people matters. I know, and as a parent. You know what my main thing was? Are, are you, are people gonna treat my kids right? Are they gonna love my kids? I, I wasn't worried about, you know, the, the math lessons or the, I wanted to know that, that, that somebody loved my kid. Kevin does it. And, uh. I kind of echo what Anita said. I, I don't get this. I really don't get this. I mean, this, it's, when you find. Part of what bothers me is, is, um. A guy puts in thirty-five years, unless, like Anita said, unless there's something we don't know about. It's like, uh. I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it. He's, he's given his, you know, thirty-five years of his life. I know that I'm not the only one that keeps wondering that. You know, what, what's the deal? What's the deal? Why Kevin? And, and full disclosure, he's, he's a, he's a good friend of mine as well. But it's, it's not really about that. It's not about, it's not even about me and it's, and friendship and Kevin and all that. It's, it's about, it's about the kids. It's about, how does this affect, how does this affect the kids? As educators, we always talk about doing what's best for kids. You hear that all the time. We gotta, we gotta do what's best for kids. Nobody would, nobody would argue with that. I know I would, and I know you guys would. Absolutely not. But it's my fervent belief that cutting the athletic director is definitely not what's best for kids. That's the bottom, bottom line. What's best for kids? Um, please reconsider the elimination of the athletic director. Cause that's what's best for kids. Thank you.
Jason Crook. My name is Jason Crook, J A S O N C R O K. You can tell it's the end of senior week and my brain's a little tired. I'll try and keep this, uh, short and to the point. I'm here tonight as a parent of three students. Uh, I'm here tonight as a parent of three students in the school district, as well as a teacher here in the high school. Though I represent myself and my own beliefs. I haven't discussed this with, um, our administration or anyone else. Maybe bounce my ideas off some other teachers and that sort of thing, but, um. I am incredibly blessed to have three children who are incredibly driven, very high achieving. Uh, any of their teachers can attest to that. Um, both my daughters are in open door. Um, one at Housel and the other one at Heights. My son has qualified, but he does not feel driven towards the content that is available to him. Um, I'm a math and physics teacher and I'm afraid that my passion, my wife's nice passion for science and math is rubbed off on my kids. Um, my oldest daughter, so my youngest daughter wants to be a large animal veterinarian. My son wants to be a mechanical engineer and work for Lego. And my daughter in seventh, we just finished seventh grade. She wants to be a zookeeper at Disney World. And I fully endorse this. Um, I love it. Yes. Um, but I also know the degree that being a zookeeper will require. I know the degree that not a chemical engineer will require. And I know that our district may not be able to support them. Uh, my wife and I are, are at a point where we're having to make some difficult decisions. I want to be very proud of our high school. I want to be very proud of our district. I am not sure that we'll be able to support her or my son or my other daughter a little bit later. Um, we currently have at Prosser High School, one full-time science teacher finishing out this year. We fortunately have, um, another one coming up from the middle school. Um, but I, I do not count myself in that list, um, because I have a single section of physics that I've had to sort of fight and scrape for. Uh, seeking out grants and donations in order to give my students hands-on learning experiences. Uh, we've had the opportunity due to donations from, uh, different groups in order to be able to build. Physical objects with our students and actually give them a chance to learn. Um, but we're, we've been told multiple times, we just, we don't have, uh, sufficient funds for certain. For a fully, for fully stocking our lab or certain things that we might need. And we're also told that we're overstaffed. We currently have in our brand new building, uh, empty science rooms. We have a. An amazing CTE apartment. I don't want to make it sound like I would disparage that because I think it's fantastic that we have CTE in our building. And I don't think it's something that we should be trying to take away from one area in order to provide something else. But I know that we are lacking in lab sciences. I know that we are lacking in a lot of different ways. Right now, a quarter of our staff is, uh, is marked as CTE, which I know that they receive funding through, um, separate avenues. It's not, it's not the same funds that is for our typical classroom teachers. That's a full quarter of our staff. And our lab sciences seem to be, um, dwindling. Uh, which I find to be a tragedy. Currently, um, I kind of straddle the line of math and science. I am trying to really push for higher expectations for our students for our math courses. Um, and I'd like to see more opportunities for STEM, um, availability for our students. But as we currently have it right now, we don't have those options. Our staff is caught up with trying to catch those students. I who are falling through the cracks and they're not, they're not able to get that attention that they need in order to fix their, um, misunderstanding, their gaps in their, in their education. And we're in, we're in a position where we are just trying to maintain rather than see our students excel. Um. What I would love to be able to see is a chance to have, um, our classes be able to meet those college readiness requirements that we see them putting out. I know Harvard puts out that college readiness is considered to be calculus. You're, you would have calculus in order to be eating qualitrious or CT or, uh. Computer science courses to go along with it. Um, college readiness according to, uh, NCTM is, um. Have knowledge of overarching ideas of science disciplines, earth science, life sciences, physical sciences, engineering. And how the practices of science are situated within this context. And I don't think that we are currently fulfilling that requirement for our students. We're not meeting our stated goal for our students.
That is, that wraps up the. Public comment portion. So I appreciate everybody that's still here, that stayed and. Appreciate all your comments and I, you know, uh. I think some of that, some of the topics that were discussed can be remedied at the, you know, the opt-out portion of, uh, our meetings, I think, later this month. We talked about hiring, you know, better classes, I guess. And, you know, maybe personally, I think we should probably look at budget and I would, you know, advise. Everybody that's left in this room, everybody that's on Zoom, get a copy of the budget, the apportionment document. And also the spreadsheets that've been, um, put out as far as what will be reduced if the levy failed or if the levy passed. Um, like those documents are available and they've been spoken about plenty of times. Uh, but maybe it warrants another, you know, another work session so forth. So I guess if we all agree to that, then we have another work session on. Thanks. Thank you. Moving on. And you're, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the business hours there this meeting. You can assess through all the public comments now we're getting to the. All right. We're gonna, we're gonna keep moving and get this one bit to go on. Next, uh, is consent items, uh, certificate personnel, classified personnel. We got a first and a second.
When, when do we approve the contract of the new business manager? What is, what's Craig's last day? I guess it's meant more.
Yeah, so we can talk a little bit about that. Um, I have forwarded that contract, um, to Sean Mumper, um, for review. Sean has, I think, a lot of work on it straight from Prosser School District. So I'm waiting back. He said sometime this week. Um, I was hoping for it earlier in the week. It looks like maybe later, later this week, hopefully tomorrow. Um, but she's asking, um, I've given it to him. And so we, in talking with her, I think that I have the terms. Um, I would expect for the next meeting, uh, the next row of scheduled meeting. I'll keep the board apprised of kind of where we're at with it. So you have eyes on it before you get to that point. So.
Sorry, I'm taking a minute to fire everything up. So we have a motion and a second to approve all those, okay, we'll signify this saying, right?
All right.
Same sign, motion carries. Vouchers and payroll. Motion and a second, we need discussion.
I, I have some questions about the vouchers specifically regarding, I think we have a bill to, um, the leases and is that for landscaping and that's on. So, okay, it is voucher nine, nine zero five four eight five. Can you carry lease?
Five four eight five?
Yeah, it is. Four from the bottom.
Oh, Carrie Wise.
Very wise, seventy dollars?
Yeah, is that for landscaping or is that, she is? Thank you. I couldn't figure out how many different landscapers we're paying. I wanted clarification. Thank you.
That's going on the van trip. That's.
Very good.
Um, I had a plethora of questions, of course.
Like my response to your plethora of questions?
I, I didn't get, I would like your response and actually trying to figure out where the emails are.
Eight ten AM.
You, oh, there it is.
I, I have. So the first question was on, and this is in the general fund. Nine oh five is, is the same numbers for all, now say the last three. Four, three, three is, is the payment of Lyle. And Mr. Rayner wanted to see how much has been paid by month. Over the year. It's roughly, the early, early years were, early months were twenty thousand. It's gone up a little bit the last couple of months, obviously because of the price of fuel. Not sure if that.
Oh, what?
Want to have a comment about that one or wait till we end?
Oh, go for it. You do think.
Uh, number four thirty-four. I think we need to have Sean discuss that one.
What's four thirty-four?
That's the border land.
Line wise, I think I've.
Oh, line wise.
Yeah, probably twice now. So if I have, you can yell at me.
Hopefully this is the first time I've ever seen this. First time we've seen this.
So prior to this year, we had the guardian. Uh, the guardian is a filtering system and a monitoring system for our students' Chromebooks. The guardian is a super great product, but line wise is a little bit cheaper and it does a little bit more for us. So we're changing to it this year. It will still serve as our filter and our monitoring system, both in district and out of district for our kids' Chromebooks. We will also be able to add Windows devices to line wise, which we couldn't with the guardian before. So. Remember a couple of board meetings ago, you questioned the vision software that the CTE department had purchased. So they did purchase it for the CTE department for this year. Uh, but next year or the following year, soon we're out of that contract, we will be able to, uh, potentially draw that service and wrap it into line wise. Jason and I also had the same question.
Thank you. You missed coming down the stairs and back up.
No, I don't miss that at all.
Oh, there's another one. So.
I was gonna say there was another one there.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile.
Which is our hotspots. That's, uh, uh, four seven six is the last few digits to that.
My question is, I know in previous vouchers, it had a different, maybe it had a different description and the description says school improvement now. That was my question of clarification. I mean, I understood what, I understood what it was, but the description has changed slightly.
It's possible because the funding has changed over the last couple of years. Initially, the funding came out of the ester funds. Uh, then I applied for and got the emergency connectivity fund from the FCC. Uh, then that funded that for a while. Simi Dean had a grant that funded two hundred of those hotspots for a year. So it's possible that description has changed with the pots of money that the funding came from.
It's just, it's this federal stimulus school improvement.
For, for the record, just so you guys know too, our T-Mobile contract technically ends, uh, August first, July thirty-first, somewhere in there. We currently have two hundred and eighty-eight hotspots still out with our families. I applied for, but have not heard yet back from, uh, the FCC for the emergency connectivity fund round three. If I'm granted that, I'm going to keep those two hundred and eighty-eight hotspots with our families for an additional year. I think it's needed in the community. It's kind of a hassle for our department to deal with, but if they're gonna give me the funding for it. I'm going to leave them with the students for another year. If I don't get the funding, they will all come back August first.
And how much are they?
Twenty dollars a month or seventeen dollars a month.
Twenty.
I've got a deal on that. Okay, it's twenty.
So fifty-seven sixty a month, fifty-seven hundred dollars sixty.
It is a free, it is. And we do have some families that, that really are in need. I would hate to pull them, uh, but it's an expense for the district to keep them in their homes. Up until now, we've had funding. So we'll see how it goes.
Next one is four forty-three, college board. You don't have to answer that one, no.
Do you have another one?
If you want it.
Want to talk about that? So those are, uh, SAT exams. And we pay them, but the students also pay us back, right?
You can't answer it exactly how.
Anyway, that's, that's how it works.
Ideally accommodations for us, if you're not the.
So that's, that's the payment to the college board. That's the ten, right? Uh, next one is four five nine, which is the Kennewick School District for seventy-seven fifty-five. That's our science kits that we. Get refurbished through Kennewick.
Oh.
So that's, that's what that is.
Have we talked to teachers about how that's working? I think that would be good feedback because they are refurbished and what I'm hearing is that's causing an issue because they're older. And there's not necessarily instructions and not every kit has all the parts. So I would like to hear feedback from the teachers as to how that's working, if that's something we should.
Not sure if Deanna, if she's on here or not.
Sure she is.
But from the teacher.
Yeah.
I, I've never had a single teacher tell me that, ever. I mean, maybe Tammy's heard that, but they go to Kennewick and they're, um, refurbished each year. Now there is a, there are new kits and they're, those are being switched out. It's like a one-year change, uh, year over year, um, to up, to an updated version. They go to training to get their teacher manuals. Um, I, I have never heard that before. We have had some issues with teachers. Uh, putting all the materials back when they were returned and then we got billed by Kennewick because they weren't, they didn't return everything and we had to do some. Uh, extra trips to get some things returned that weren't put into kits, but I have never heard that before. So I just encourage you, if you had a teacher that, share that to direct them to me so that I can help them.
Yeah, we are talking about four seven six, T-Mobile. The next one is four eighty-one, which is to, um, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, four sixty-nine.
Yes.
Four sixty-nine is a check payable to our food service in Prosser. We sometimes, uh, cater. Meals, cookies, water, things like that. And that's what, that's what these are, various programs like, um, migrant programs in here.
Is that a, that's a local process?
That's our own.
That's all. I had a more question on the vendor than I had in general.
That's, so checks written to the, to the school district and we deposit that. Forty-one is, uh. Trying to think of what Yusef is, uh. In United Schools Insurance Program, I think, United Schools. So, uh.
It's the parent company clear rates.
Our insurance liability. So whenever we have a claim, it's our fault, sorry to shudge, which is what this was. It's a thousand dollars we got to cut. Thank you. So that's, that's what that one was. And then four eighty-six to the Washington Society of Personnel. The Washington Society of Personnel Association, WASPA. That was a boot camp for, um, our HR lady, Kim Thornton. She typically goes to that annual conference every year. So that's the registration.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay.
How about four eighty-three to WISU for eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Description is. Um, ELL tuition, English language learners. There was a handful of, um. Program sixty-four is the, no, is, what's sixty-four again? Is that a title four?
Title three bilingual, um, it's professional development for bilingual education.
So let's say there was like five teachers that.
Any other questions on the vouchers? I would like to, Craig provided me a document that listed our fuel expenses from September to basically the end of.
Include this thing right now.
May and that would include, oh, that's right, includes this payment on, on the voucher. And like Craig said, we've been seeing right around twenty and in March it went up to thirty-nine thousand. Uh, and we've actually started saving money, it went down to twenty-eight, so. My sarcasm.
Was November a discussion about grants through the state and I think also through the bed, the federal government for electric buses? So that, I mean, I don't know if that's still available, maybe for an E-town route to save.
I thought we did talk about.
Yeah, I think we're still kind of waiting for that to come to pass, the rent for that, but.
And whether it's practical.
Absolutely.
I think like three hundred, three hundred and thirty thousand or something.
Yeah, they had one through the state that they were pushing. This is a few years ago, they were pushing propane buses and uh, the short run costs were that it was cheaper because there were grants. The long run costs proved that it wasn't. And so if if you were a district, you know, kind of bit on that, then the long runs would price you out. You know, and a lot of rural districts were like, hey, cost savings. Um, small rural districts, actually, some of their transportation sometimes comes out of DEA because they're so spread out. So that's it, that's one key, you know, like thing we'll have to keep in mind that, what are the upfront costs? And then what's the depreciation, the long run costs? Will we be eating in some way or will it come into the DEA process?
Okay, any other questions on vouchers and payroll? Are you gonna, I got a motion in a second to approve. Vouchers and payroll, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Uh, I D B is second reading of policy procedures, twenty-one forty-five, suicide prevention. Uh, questions, comments?
Under any alterations between the first reading and the second reading?
No, the only alteration came in the nepotism policy. Yeah, um, we had talked about at one time, there was a kind of a clause or an emergency um type of waiver for the district to intervene if there was no other option, that uh, we could approve it on a case by case basis. But the other ones, no, there hasn't been any alterations.
I have the, I have one question on staff training. Within this, have we researched or planned um what that training will look like and when that may take place?
We do, yeah, we have Safe School, which is an online provider. One of the benefits of it is that it logs and tracks teachers, um, so you don't have to collect signing sheets and and you can pull that data pretty quickly. And so that's one, um, I I think when we start talking about suicide prevention, there are a lot of people both locally and regionally, um, who can provide also different, I think, aspects of um to students who died by suicide or mental health and things like that. So I think that there's, there is a more than one side professionally involved people on. Um, so you know, how do you refer a kid if um, you know that he doesn't have, you know, like his mental health is in question? Um, who are the, you know, where are the resources, how do you have those conversations? And then I think that there's a general um, kind of liability piece about like, this is, this is the training that we're required to give. Here are the steps that you're gonna take uh, throughout the district. So both procedural and I think that there's kind of an understanding.
So I think we need a motion in a second to move this forward, correct? So it's been a motion in a second to move this, that'd be the final, the option.
Yeah.
Um, of uh, policy procedure twenty-one forty-five, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posing sign, motion carries. Uh, second reading of policy eighteen oh five, open government trainings. Questions, concerns, if that one.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion in a second to approve policy eighteen oh five, open government trains, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Second reading of policy and procedure sixty-one oh two, district fundraising. Which includes the grammar question. I only had one question and I thought I saw it before, but maybe I didn't. Uh, was there a max dollar figure that can be fundraised?
Um, Deanna, do you know the answer to that?
Well, I don't, I don't know that there's a max dollar figure and um, and we didn't put one in the policy. I'm think there's certainly limits to what people could raise and that they're gonna have to request an amount um in their form, so. Elisa, do you remember, we didn't talk about that.
We don't have a limit set in the policy, but in the form they have to fill out and it has to be approved by an administrator before they can.
Yeah.
We did talk about, you, and you know, the item and grants, because if someone's trying to get, you know, a big, big grant that would get, you know, tech for the whole school, that's great. But yeah, it would be on a case by case basis.
Okay, so somebody could try to get a hundred thousand dollar donation and it would be, it would go through the process of approval.
Yeah, no one is that, it's not like heart launch, everything will be approved as it gets.
Yeah, nobody cannot, no Ferraris, no Lamborghinis.
Well, what fun is that?
Well, probably none.
All right, do we, uh, do we have a motion in a second to approve policy and procedure sixty-one oh two?
I'll second, Jason.
Been a motion in a second to approve policy and procedure sixty-one oh two, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Deanna and Elisa, I want to thank you for your work on that policy and helping develop that. I think that will be done a question for teachers.
Happy to do it.
Moving on to E is the second reading of policy sixteen-ten, conflict of interest nepotism.
So Matt, is it item six on the conflict of interest that was added? The school district have fewer than two hundred FTE students, the board being for the spouse of a director or the superintendent as a certified or classified staff.
Yeah. Was that what we put in there, explain, no?
Um, we added F under nepotism.
No, I remember Andy requested it, but he wondered was, in the event of emergency staffing, that we could employ like spouses or in the same building on a temporary basis.
There's, there's no limitation on spouses with this nepotism policy.
Well, I didn't mean, I meant family members, that's what I wanted to say.
That's still allowed.
Yeah.
That would not prohibit anyone's spouse from receiving the district. That's not what the nepotism policy addresses. It addresses spouses and family members from supervising each other, which is clearly.
I, I think Andy used to use the example of the friends of the veterans to, this like temporary decision. In a conventional emergency, we could allow that.
Was that added to the policy?
Yeah, that uh, exemptions may be granted for family members working in the district.
But he made it part clearly. So we have no one to fill the session.
Do not say emergency, special exemptions may be granted to family members working in a foster school district. Approval of these exemptions will be granted by the superintendent and district. So if they tend to for an emergency situation, that language needs to be added.
I just.
Yeah.
Do you, so we put, we put in there, shared with the board, so the board would have if if there was ever any, I guess, uh, concerns with what we were doing, that the board would be able to express that. So, you know, or, yeah, concerns or reservations. Um, if we want to include emergency, but I think we get into when we start using the vocabulary of emergencies, like how do you find that?
My concern is that's not how it reads. Approval of these exemptions will be granted by the superintendent and shared with the board. So it says, you get to do it and then you get to tell us about it.
Yeah, I, I do, and this is me, um, I always work to try and keep everybody apprised of things um, in in the board prize. Um, so my commitment will be before that's ever signed off on, I'm sharing that with you guys, so.
But, and I don't, I'm not, I don't disagree with that, but I think we have a policy that may be yours stat, you know, stature or the way you operate now. Uh, but to prevent, you know, future boards and future superintendents, uh, maybe it should be.
Yeah.
Granted by the superintendent and the board.
What we can do is amend the language, so prove it with amended language that says, um, will be shared with the board prior to superintendent approval. So.
Granted by the superintendent in conjunction with the board.
Okay.
Okay, so um.
We can bring it back, yeah.
Moving it back for a second.
It's up to the board.
Or just approve it for the final with the amended language.
I, I'd be back, amend it and bring it back for third reading.
For the final, right?
Yeah, for the final, yeah.
So do we need a motion? Let the motion.
To table, so usually second and final are synonymous.
I would say amend item F three, second to district, so all of these conventions will be granted by the superintendent in conjunction with or for all. Omni doors. That were not in that sentence and bring back for second, final.
Okay. Second. Uh, moved in second to bring this back with.
Just bring it back.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next is temporary out of endorsement wa- waivers. Yeah.
So I, I just want to say here, so there's two items on the board packet that my office submitted in the fall. Uh, Tammy did it, there are things, once they're approved, they go into the minutes and then we have some reporting we do in the, this time of the year. And when we went to go upload them and put them into the report, they weren't there. They were never added to the board packet, so that's just a communication issue that Tammy and I are solving because she does a lot of that legwork for board packet items. So this one, this endorsement waiver and then the highly capable program plan was in the fall too, but uh, between the two of us, we missed that it didn't get included in the packet, so our apologies on that.
So you're saying it was actually approved in a board meeting, but that.
It was sub, it was submitted, but it was back in a previous assistant and then, so Tammy submits it and then a bunch of the other waivers were in there, but that one was, for whatever reason, that one was missed or wasn't included. And we didn't catch that it wasn't included.
So it wasn't approved and now we're playing catch-up.
Right, this is cat, this is doing it because it didn't get, get approved in the fall.
My, my question will probably go for this one and the next one as well. Um, are we non-compliant by not doing that in August?
No, no, we just have to do it. I mean, for me, I feel non-compliant because it didn't get done in the fall like it was supposed to, but as long as it goes through the board, it's, it, that's not an issue. And this teacher actually, Maria, she actually finished her degree, she's no longer out of endorsement, but we, so we won't have to do it for our next year.
So I guess, continue my question, so if it got missed and uh, technically she was teaching without a proper certificate, I'm just trying to wrap my hands around, or my head around.
So she has, she has a certificate, a teaching certificate, but she's teaching bilingual education and not history. So we've actually approved an out of endorsement waiver for her, I think, three years, but she just finished her masters in her elementary teaching um, recently, so we normally approve them in the fall, but like I said, hers was submitted and then it wasn't included in the packet. And so when we missed that, so it's, the fact that we're doing it now is like, the state knows we're doing it now, they don't have a problem with it. It's a title-two report that we have to submit, which is um, a teacher and report about their endorsements and those kinds of things.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the temporary out of endorsement waiver.
And I'll second that.
Moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Central Washington University College and the High School Program in a local agreement for uh, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Yeah, this is. This is the, this is just our agreement that allows us to offer their college and high school courses at um, PHS.
We have to approve, is it, this is has to be approved every year, Deanna?
Uh, yeah, we do it year to year.
I'll make a motion then to approve the Central Washington University College in the classroom in a local agreement for twenty-three.
First and uh, motion in a second to approve the annual with Central Washington University for next year, the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I did, I did have one question, Deanna, it's uh, at this point, we have one teacher and she's teaching um math, is that correct?
Uh, so since for central, we only do the math classes through central, we actually have two, pre-calculus and statistics. Um, for the, all the, all of our other college and the high school classes are through Eastern.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving to item H, highly capable program plan approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the highly capable program plan approval.
Second.
Second, I have a question. Are there any changes in this plan from last year's plan? Or this, wait, is this last year's plan and it was missed?
This is this year's plan, also it's the other item that was submitted in the fall that did get included in the packet. So we complete the highly capable grant basically each year um, with what we're offering for the year. And then um, then that's the board's supposed to approve that, so that was another thing, it was submitted in the fall, Tammy submitted it. Didn't get concluded in the packet, I missed that. Um, so yeah, our, our program is, is changing some for next year, uh, but for this year, no.
And we have a motion in a second to program, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on to resolution number zero-nine-two-two, declaring surplus of equipment and supplies.
I think we should have Sean come talk about technology.
I'm sitting here going, I know I'm gonna have to go up here.
Only if they have questions.
He's not going down a bunch of stuff.
I know, right?
If I have questions.
Okay, I have some answers, maybe.
Such a surplus, it's junk, not needed.
I think what you're looking at is general surplus, so it's from old apartments, buildings, I, I believe that's not just my tech surplus, correct? Yeah, that's just the surplus from everything, uh, there's probably furniture books miscellaneous, I have some technology on there. I believe the surplus sale is the sixteen, eighteen, it's coming up quick in the next couple months. Like it's either the end of June, first of July, July, the weekend. Maintenance takes care of that for us here.
Any other questions concerned about the surplus?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero nine twenty-two declaring surplus of equipment and supplies.
First, uh, notion in a second to approve resolution zero nine two two. Since it's roll call vote, Lisa?
Agree, yay.
Jean?
Jean.
Peggy?
Yes.
So is yes. Last thing on the fraction items is awarding the moving contract with helping move.
Are we moving the date or the contract? Cause there's no contract.
No contract.
Let's see then.
Well, the agenda says. There's no contract.
Do we have a contract?
I have three bids.
Are they gonna send us a contract?
Uh, I wouldn't, that's probably my bad for saying contract. Avoiding the.
Take your puff bet.
Avoiding the word two.
Well, entertaining, but do we have a motion?
I want the contract, but now I'll change it to avoid the bid to help you.
And just for clarification, there's, there's not gonna be a contract to outline the terms of moving. Have the price of seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars, we're just, we're just doing that a bit in good faith.
So it's a, it's a quote and it's, you know, June fourteen, came here review. Forty-two hundred dollars, there's West Rand moving to the old high school.
Does it include a scope of work?
Flat rate forty-two hundred dollars a day guaranteed nine hour workdays, I mean, the list what they're doing, the work. And how much it is, I understand.
The recommendation says moving, I guess, my concern is usually scope decides or when I move or had items moved. I sign a contract or it's presented to me, but the scope of work is gonna be who's carrying the insurance and what's gonna happen. And I think we need to see that.
The, the only thing that I would comment on this is, um. I know Brian worked really hard on this for a couple of months, it's really, it's really challenging because it is a really big job. And ultimately, they're moving everything, everything in the school is getting moved and. And they have to start moving, uh, the things out of Riverview on Tuesday. For the construction timeline to be met.
I mean, it's, it's, it's an estimate that says what they're doing, I mean.
Oh, I, I mean, I understand, I'm just confused, or I mean, this is unusual that there wouldn't be a contract. That even we're gonna, we're gonna pay them for this work and either the services are gonna be provided and they're licensed and bonded and. I mean, did we have a contract last summer?
No.
We just hope, we just hope they show up and do it, don't damage things on good faith and promise and that everyone's nice.
That actually, the damage piece is the only piece that I would be overly worried about.
There's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, they can invoice us.
And we have a contract that says that.
And if, uh, the work doesn't get done, obviously, or not done to the quality that our standards, we can withhold the payment.
It can be, there's not a contract that outlines that?
That's what we did.
Would you have people come to your house and move everything out of your house to another house without an agreement outlining that?
It's an estimate, there could be five days less, depends on, that's the maximum. In charge.
We can call up.
You wanna table this?
I think you should table, that's a lot of money to not have a contract and that would just.
But it's anything to start Tuesday, right?
Well, we have a special meeting tomorrow.
Or we, after graduation on Saturday, post board and come back in here after the graduation ceremony and do approval.
So tell me what.
I mean, this should have been, I mean, to make the educated decision, it should have been in the back in the board packet.
Danny, you said you need it by Tuesday?
I, they, they're starting to move, they have to move starting Tuesday before the, for Fowler, because they're taking all those portables out of the. Out at, at Riverview.
We can do it Monday too, Monday or Tuesday morning, or no, they start Tuesday, so we have Monday morning.
So a couple items, I think, uh, Lisa, you were referring to is, you know, insurance, the scope of work. I don't disagree with that, it is a lot of money, but I think that's prudent.
I, I would assume the bond, the new, they have to be.
Well, let's, let's, let's know, let's find out, it's pretty simple to find that out, yeah, but not assume.
So I have a, currently I have an open motion to, to approve the bid. Um, I do not have a second that I remember. So it's, uh, the motion's gonna die after the lack of the second.
I think we need to, I think we need more information before we approve it. Like I said, we're gonna have to fast track it if they have to start moving, the work has to start on Tuesday, so. It looks like, um. What have we been doing Monday night?
What about, we've done that before, call resume on a lunchtime, just for one item. All right, so Monday, it blows everybody, all right, with one, one item approval agenda. All we need is four.
No.
Monday, I can do twelve. Yeah, all right, so twelve o'clock. I can, I can actually be present for twelve o'clock. So I will be twelve o'clock, I'm sorry.
We'll move to table, uh, this, you're being bid, the help you move till. Monday at twelve. That's my motion.
Okay, second, yeah.
I was in favor, signify by saying aye. I know, Boys and Girls Club folks have been here for the entirety of it, I appreciate that.
It's been fun.
I know, would you mind if we bumped up the lease agreement with the Boys and Girls, uh, what's your plan of future, right, out of all?
Yeah, no, it's not, I don't think it's a long discussion, but it's a, it's an important discussion, I'll say that. So, so Brian Aces and Chris Snaros are here, um, we had a, we spoke with them, it was a smaller meeting with, uh, at the district office. And, um, initially, the Boys and Girls Club was looking at, uh, building a new facility. And so, um, they really, uh, looked at kind of our Boag or old, the old CTE building at, um, old PHS. And so, uh, they, they wanna know about a long-term lease agreement and working with Prosser School District to. Uh, use those facilities now that they're vacant. And so, as we know, that, um, there, it's a, it's a pretty good location, uh, right across from the city park, right across from the library. Um, within walking proximity, um, of both downtown and the schools. Um, and so, yeah, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of effort behind it, but, uh. Yeah, the discussions are in their infancy, but, uh, we wanna know if, um, that's of interest to the district. And at some point, we can move forward and start talking, um, kind of more, more details about what that long-term lease agreement would look like. So. They have a practice field there, I mean, uh, and they're already, you guys are already in the white church, um, so they're, we're already working on it. Uh, with them around partnerships, um, so, yeah, Brandon, do you wanna?
No, I mean, it's one of those pieces that we've been working to, um. Unite two program facilities in the Froster community, do a single program facility that's more safe. Efficient, effective, for me, of dignity and work with the kids we serve and we serve. It's a good goal, um, and looking at a renovation of that space, uh, came in at about two hundred square foot versus two ninety square foot from you there, so. Um, great location, great space, we'd love to invest some, um, large dollars in it to free it up to a great standard of care for kids. And we'd love to continue that partnership with the school district to serve your kids.
So Boys and Girls Club I see as a, um, is a multiplier, um, in the equation, so. Uh, schools, schools can't do it alone, and so we have really effective programs within our community like Boys and Girls Club. Um, they really can assist our students with, um, enriching activities after the day, tutoring support. Um, and even, even giving students, um, a meaningful mentor, um, or, or adult, caring adult figure within their life. And so, I really appreciate the work that they do and I think that it's mutually beneficial. Um, and I would like to see it still be used and still full, you know, filled with kids and. Full schools or full, uh, full facilities or facilities, so.
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea to keep exploring that and it gets to good work, so, I appreciate it, so.
Oh, I think we should do everything to make this happen. I would just any organization in Froster more supportive and developed than the Froster place. And we think this is great.
We will, uh, we'll circle back around, um, on this, I think that, you know, part of our discussions have been around facilities and. How we can use facilities, um, Boys and Girls Club definitely has a vision. But as we start talking, um, with them and developing the details of, of a plan, uh, we'll bring that back to the board. And, uh, of course, that plays into our larger conversation about improvement of facilities throughout the district.
Did you, that's exciting.
All right, we'll be meeting in the future.
Appreciate.
Thanks for sticking with us.
Thanks for waiting, go through the long haul. Um, all right, we're gonna go back to, uh, item A, discussion item plan for future work.
Yeah, so we've had, I think, one of our next meetings is around facilities, but, um, just to bring it back to the board. Um, there are a number of different discussions hanging out there that, um, I think it's important to put back on the radar. Um, so we can get those handled throughout the summer months, or we can start work on it. Um, the student handbook, uh, when we're talking about, uh, student discipline. Um, the budget, of course, um, we've been talking extensively about that, but as we go through July and, you know, into August and. Looking improving that, um, really defining what we want out of that. Uh, we talked about the extracurricular code of conduct, code of conduct, um, used to be the athletic code, but I think they've extended that to all extracurricular programs. Um, summer work, this could be other next meeting, we usually have the maintenance director. Present at the onset of summer, just talking about different facilities work that they're gonna do. And then looping back around at the start of the year to see, um, the progress they made on that. Uh, I, I mentioned it briefly, um, there's a conversation hanging out around out there about. Uh, redistricting based upon the census, uh, that we need to, to have, and then student board reps. Uh, we need to, uh, select our new student board reps, I know that they've been advertising that at the high school. If you know any, um, high school students that, um, are interested in, in either state or local politics, I think this is a great. Learning experience forum, um, but yeah, we'll need to find some more student board reps to fill those positions and help, uh, help inform our decisions, uh, for next year. So that's all I had for future work. Yeah.
All right, uh, next thing is information items, uh, graduation.
Yeah, June eleventh, Art Viker, ten o'clock. Um, typically, the sun's out, I don't know if it will be sunny or rainy, um, this time around, but. Uh, if you look on the forecast, the, the morning before and it's sunny, wear sunscreen. And if not, uh, I'll bring an umbrella, yeah, so, so, yeah, thi- this is a. In talking with board members, and this isn't unique to Froster, but it's, it's one of these, it's like Super Bowl Sunday, um, for board members. It's watching their, their work kinda come to fruition, and so it's a special event and, um. I, I think you're really gonna enjoy it, seeing those kids walk across the stage and. It, it's a really neat experience to be there, be up there and congratulate them and their diploma. Many kids being the first in their generation to graduate, or the first, uh, child in their family sometimes.
Is there a backup plan of the order to bring Saturday?
Yeah, usually, usually they have the gym, uh, staged for that, and so they transition indoors. So, yeah, there's usually a contingency plan in case things get nasty. Now, if we start at the ceremony, it starts raining somewhere in the middle of it, that's more difficult to transition, so. You might have to stay on it, yeah, yeah. So that's all I had of that.
Oh, yes, I do. I hope so.
Awesome, well, uh. Thank you for that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it, I know that, um. Assistant Superintendent's report, great.
So quick things, um, number one, we've been approved by the state for the community eligibility provision. That was a requirement that the legislature gave to us, and we have been approved. The state says that they will pay the difference between. What the CEP reimbursement rate is. And what it is as non-CEP, that makes any sense, so for example, the CEP rate. So all kids eat free is like three dollars and fifty-one cents, but the, uh, the rate. Under the seamless summers, or seamless food service program is like four dollars, or sixty-one, something like that, so. That difference, my understanding is the state is gonna basically hold this harness. So it should be revenue neutral. Um, but hopefully there'll be more kid, I mean, they're eating free now, so I'm not sure there'll be more, but, um. So CEP's been approved, the other thing, I, I'm just, my main focus now is, is trying to get a draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And maybe just for a conversation quickly. For what the calendar looks like. We're required to have a draft of the budget by July tenth. That's actually, uh, Sunday, so it's really July eighth, I mean. And then the board has to actually adopt the budget by the end of August. Um, I'm planning on having it. Ninety-five percent done, we'll have some conversations and probably a study session or two, we can squeeze that in to let you know what it looks like. And then, I'm basically done June thirtieth. So, it's been good, been fun, but it hasn't been rough. So, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Craig. Uh, Deanna?
So, first thing is, I'm sorry I'm not there tonight, um, I'm not feeling really good today and I was, exposed by a coworker to COVID a couple days ago, well, Monday or Tuesday, so, I felt it was better safe than sorry. And come and breathe on everybody. Um, two things, um, our district constructional materials committee approved both the arts and the K five B L A curriculum adoption, so, those will be coming to the board in the future after our review period. And then the second thing is, um, I, we had our sexual health, um, parent meeting, the overview this week. We, I, I was kinda surprised, I thought more parents would, were going, would attend, but we did have thirty people in the meeting, some of those were our, um, some of our folks that teach some of the curriculum. And then from that, so far, I've had about twelve people volunteer for the committee, maybe, uh, with a couple emails, maybe closer to fifteen, so. We're gonna start those meetings here, um, in the next couple of weeks, uh, to start reviewing the standards and then looking at curriculum. And that's all for me.
Thank you, yeah?
Yeah, I just had a couple, couple different pieces. I, there've been different events this week, um, so I just wanna, uh, thank and praise board members for showing up to all those senior events. Um, and, uh, the, the curriculum, uh, committee meeting that Deanna had. I know that one of you were able to attend, so thank you so much for that. Um, we have, tomorrow, we actually have a treat for the students, we have some Seattle Seahawks, who are coming in and gonna do some speaking, um, to the high school students, so that should be a neat, uh, a neat deal. And then, of course, looking at, um, Craig had said he's done, there will be a gap, um, but we're looking, gap between when the new business manager comes on and, when Craig leaves, and so we're looking at some creative solutions in order to resolve that, so, uh, that's all I have.
Uh, board member reports, uh, Lisa?
Um, I just had a few comments on the comments that were made during public comment and some reflections, uh, scholarship night. Um, I believe the class size this year is two hundred and twenty-seven, and the number of students, Prosser students that are opting out are two hundred and thirty-seven, that's an entire class, so it's, the magnitude of that I don't think can be overemphasized, it's a huge amount, we need to address that. Um, talking about higher level classes, I know that when I graduated from Prosser High School, Mrs. Warner's British College Prep British Literature is how I got through law school, when I talked to other people, when I talked to Katie Elliott, um, those are the classes that got us through graduate school, she taught us how to study, she taught us, and I, I know that's what did it for me. And we have to capture and bring those classes back. We're graduating wonderful students, but can they go to college and compete in, in a college chemistry class with students that took advanced placement called chemistry and had labs? And we have students that have had no lab in a chemistry class all year, that's inadequate, um. So, we need to heavily consider that and implement it as soon as possible, and then also, we need to have a plan, um, for sports, what's gonna happen after Monday? But who's, who's the point person, who's go-to, if that needs to be addressed and taken care of. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Jeanne?
No, I was at scholarship night, um, I, I was quite impressed by the amount of scholarships and the, the level of achievement of the kids. And then last month I went to Baccalaureate, it was extremely well done, and, um, I want to say was one of the planners, and it was beautiful. Then I think next week is the Thrive Lunchroom that we all invited to, so check your calendars, hey, uh, you'll be excited tomorrow, Mary.
Thank you, thanks.
Um, yeah. I am always impressed with the, um, the willingness of, of the, uh, community and the parents to step forward and the, well, staff, community parents, to step forward and, and to share their thoughts about this. We do have, we do have some big, big issues that are, are before, and then we do have some big decisions that we have, have made and some big decisions that we still have to make, and, um, none of those decisions are ever easy, uh. It's our job, right, is to keep moving forward and making, trying to make the best decisions that we can, so. Um, in preparing for graduation, this is our last grandchild that's graduated this year from Prosser, so I'm pretty excited about that. Yeah, so I'm pretty excited about that, and, um, I'm kinda sad about that too, you know, it's kind of a, uh, a happy sad moment. She's graduating though, and so I'm looking forward to Saturday and, um, just moving forward, but I did appreciate everybody to be able to talk.
I guess who's gonna give her the call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get out of the way.
She'll mow us down.
No, it'd be Taylor that'll be mowing everybody else down to get the cameras, but anyway, yeah, so it's, it's been good.
Thank you. You know, I, I think it's great to have, um, you know, public come in and, and speak on the topics that they're passionate about, I think that's a whole part of this process, uh, being not only, you know, a small community, but I think it's, you know, we all, we all contribute for the same goal, and, you know, I'm grateful that parents and, and, and teachers, community members, all, all the above came and, and spoke at not only this meeting, but the last meeting. But I don't want it to stop, I mean, they, we all need to play an active role in how this school moves forward, and we all need to contribute. And I think, um, you know, I think it's, it's great that, that, that they came and I, and I hope they continue to come and invest their time, energy, looking at, you know, like the budget, for instance, uh, looking at that, looking at, you know, the spreadsheets that, that we've seen, um, that now I think the public is starting to gain enough interest that they're seeing, I mean, we've seen them for the last three or four months. Uh, and now, i- it's coming to light, so I think that's good. Uh, lastly, uh, I did attend the, the meeting on, I don't even know what day it was, the, the sex ed meeting that Deanna put on, I thought she did a great job. Tuesday, um, I thought she did a great job explaining it, kind of the next processes. Um, I do have, and Deanna, I'll probably reach out to you tomorrow, I've got a few people that are interested. But again, I was a little disappointed in the people that, I mean, I was, I was disappointed in the number of people that were there. Um, it was great to have parents and back, you know, staff there, but again, this is a, you know, another, I hop at an item, I guess, would be the word. Um, and we didn't see that many people there, so hopefully, the word will spread and we can get more people, you know, to, to contribute to the curriculum on that, so.
Thank, thank you for coming, Jason, I appreciate it.
No problem, and that's all I got, so.
I have one thing else I wanna say, and he just stood up, so it reminded me that with, um, with all the troubles that we've seen in, in the schools, um, especially the, the latest shootings in, um, Texas. I was very grateful for the safety officers, the trained safety officers that we have here at Prosser. And, um, I am very grateful for all, all of the coverage that we have with our, our trained safety officer, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that there was some debate, um, when initially the board chose to equip officers and took one in every building. Um, but when, when tragedies like this occur, um, I think that we're grateful in Prosser that we do have people who are former law enforcement on campus, and they're willing to protect our children, so, thank you Glenn, and please thank the, the rest of, uh, the security officers, is that, the lead security officer, we really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Alright, with that, that's the, the balance of the agenda, we will, um, I guess, have to hit this thing.
Uh, executives. Usually, we adjourn into a technical session of, uh, adjourned.
Alright. Well, we're convened, sorry, convened. As said, we're gonna start an executive session, R C W forty-two dot thirty dot, uh, one ten, one G. And that's to evaluate the qualification of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee, however, subject to R C W.
Thank you, everyone.
Forty-two, thirty, one forty-four, discussion by governing body of salaries, wages, and other conditions of employment generally applied within the agency, shall occur in a meeting open to the public, and when a governing body elects to take final action hiring, setting the salary of individual employee, or a class of employees, um, or discharging or disciplining an employee, this action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And we will have an executive session for.
Uh, let's do, let's do forty minutes to start with.
And we, we currently have twenty-four meet, twenty-four people online, are we going to open Zoom back up?
Um, just briefly to adjourn, yeah.
There's no decisions.
Yeah, no decisions to be made on this. Fred Brays on there, Fred, we have a plaque for you, it's one thing.
Uh, we're gonna convene in the executive session, so that's okay. Alright, we're gonna read convenes, or.
They took your gavel.
I know, I don't even gotta hit the gavel at the end.
Just hit your head on the tape, honestly.
I don't even know what I'm supposed to say at this point, but we're gonna convene the regular meeting and meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you. And it should be about twenty minutes, but it's about.